Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our school board meeting. Today is March seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. Appreciate you all being here. And if you will, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. And if you will now stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, could you please roll call for board members?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ms. Burns.
Present.
Ms. Cooper.
Here.
Ms. Dooley.
Here.
Mr. Morse.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Ms. Richardson.
Here.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
And Ms. Peepy.
I'm here.
Thank you so much. All right, now, if I may have a motion for approval of tonight's agenda.
I move that we accept our agenda as proposed.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. And now we will open the meeting up for comments from members of the community. We will start with those who have signed up and who are here in the media center with us. First up is Mr. Derek Hartline. Please state your address and remember you're limited to three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Gurley. My name is Derek Hartline, fifteen seventeen Antoinette Avenue. Tonight, I would like to discuss the three topics in the school safety update. I want to first take a minute and read some newspaper excerpts that I saved from my days as a paper boy that you might find interesting. Charlottesville school administrators closed the high school at eleven A.M. after fights broke out. Plainclothes detectives were called after bookcases were overturned and students refused to get off buses. The next day, school reopened. About four hundred students stayed home. Thirty-five others were sent home after refusing to attend class. C.H.S. students remained very, very frightened in the wake of fighting. Following three days of unrest at the school, continued meetings with students and community leaders occurred to deal with the tension at the high school. The excerpts I just read came from the Washington Post, USA Today, and the Daily Progress on March seventh, nineteen eighty-four, forty years ago exactly today. This was a dark time for the city schools. Here we are forty years later, still dealing with school safety concerns at C.H.S. As you discuss the survey findings tonight and look at proposed next steps, please consider the following. One, weapon detectors. Is the forty thousand dollar cost for two gates the best use of funds when there are elementary schools in the system who don't have cameras or key fob entry on all exterior doors? The riot that occurred in nineteen eighty-four resulted in a library's book detector being destroyed in this very library. But why? When the school's problems were probed, the reason was students felt distrusted. As the detectors you wish to purchase, are they insured if such distrust results in vandalism again? Two, resource officers. From nineteen eighty-two to nineteen ninety-six, C.H.S. had an S.R.O. by the name of Bob Romanak. In my time as a C.H.S. student, I never saw him in a uniform. I did see his positive interactions with the students, his commitment as a wrestling coach, and his leadership as the supervisor of the police explorers unit that former interim police chief Tito Duratt was a graduate of in the nineties. Why didn't resource officers come up in the November-December community meetings? With the budget being hard to align, how can a trip to Massachusetts be afforded? Why, when the Uvalde Foundation offered to fund a resource officer, it was denied? But if you go with the Cambridge model, how will it be funded? Lastly, number three, the cellphone policy. Six months ago, a no-cellphone policy was put into place but has not been followed to fidelity. Nationally, seventy-six point nine percent of schools prohibit them. Dr. Gurley was quoted by saying their use is as an addiction. How is altering the policy supporting students' mental health? It's kind of an insult to Jen Torn, who pushed for the board to create a committee that removed the cellphones. It's claimed that the policy is successful at Buford, but why can't it be at C.H.S? You have the authority to see it enforced. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have Ms. Thomas.
Thank you. Good to see everyone. My name is Laura Mulligan-Thomas, and I'm the former director of the Charlottesville High School Orchestra, having retired about a year and a half ago. I spent the first six of my forty years in the Charlottesville City Schools teaching elementary strings in the fifth grade. In addition to teaching at C.H.S., I was in four buildings. Prior to nineteen eighty-eight, when the fifth grade was moved to Walker, all six Charlottesville elementary schools offered beginning band and orchestra classes in the fifth grade, twice per week for forty-five minutes. Three orchestra teachers and four full-time band directors provided instruction at nine Charlottesville schools, all six elementaries, plus Walker, plus Buford, plus C.H.S. My elementary students told me they could not wait to become a fifth grader so they could join their elementary school band and orchestra and learn to play the trumpet, violin, drums, cello, or bass. I speak tonight to encourage the board to continue to fully fund the instrumental music program in grades five through twelve, as it has for more than half a century. The Charlottesville City Schools' five-through-twelve instrumental music program has been the premier program in our region for more than fifty years. Alumni of the C.H.S. orchestra and band programs who got their start right here in the fifth grade have performed with world-class orchestras and world-famous pop stars, including Dave Matthews, Stevie Wonder, the Jonas Brothers, and Taylor Swift. C.H.S. bands and orchestras have traveled to Europe multiple times to represent our school division and community in concert and competition. Conscious decisions at the division level and years of dedication were required to establish and sustain this level of quality. As an example of the division's continued commitment, about five years ago, hundreds of new instruments were purchased to ensure that every single fifth and sixth grader had access to a quality band or orchestra instrument, regardless of their family's economic circumstances. The benefits of early instrumental music participation are well documented: improved math and reading scores, social-emotional learning, teamwork and leadership, the development of creative, critical, and independent thinking, and last but not least, the creation of a sense of belonging. All of our kids need that. All Charlottesville fifth graders deserve to be provided this amazing opportunity to begin band and orchestra instruction in fifth grade as generations of Charlottesville students who came before them have been.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here in the media center? Go ahead and step on up to the podium. Please state your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Joyce Polifka. My address is sixteen twenty-seven Saint Anne's Road in Charlottesville, Virginia. I am the proud parent of three Charlottesville, three children who live and go to school in Charlottesville City Schools. I'm also a piano teacher and have the privilege of working with dozens of youth in our city school system on a weekly basis. I wanted to share with you all a bit of our family's experience as beneficiaries of the treasure that is the arts program in Charlottesville City Schools in the hopes that our family's story can illustrate the importance of making it a priority to keep these programs intact when the schools reconfigure in the coming years. Our family relocated to Charlottesville from Colorado in January of two thousand and eighteen. Our daughter Elle, at the time, was in fifth grade, and as you can imagine, beyond devastated to move across the country. As we knew nothing about Charlottesville, we were relying on advice from people at my husband's new job to figure out where to live and, more importantly, where to send our kids to school. When people found out Elle was a serious violinist, we were inundated with recommendations to try to live in the city limits so she could participate in their esteemed music program. At the time, we were skeptical, thinking, how good can an elementary school orchestra be? Well, Elle came home from her first day of fifth grade at Walker with light in her eyes again, thrilled that she could be part of this orchestra program, which she said was so much better. Since that first day, she hasn't looked back. She's been in the orchestras at Walker and Buford and now currently serves as the concert master for Charlottesville High School's award-winning string ensemble. In the past six years, she's gone to travel with these groups to New York, Orlando, Los Angeles, Virginia Beach, and is going to go to Spain and Portugal next summer. All of this has been possible through fundraising and grants. She's worked with students from every branch of our community and has made some incredible friendships. What sets this program apart is the access that all of our students have to this high level of music-making. Even though she was in public school in Colorado, students had to afford their instruments to be in the orchestra, and only the schools in the wealthiest neighborhoods had any programs of note as the strength of their orchestras was the result of its members having private lessons on the side, not what they were receiving at school. For so many kids that partake in band and orchestra, these are their teams. This is where they learn to work with others and get the immense reward of creating beauty. In fifth grade, adolescence hasn't kicked into overdrive yet. These are kids are kids, and this is the time to lay the groundwork for their music study. Over the years, I've helped out with the fifth and sixth grade music programs and continuously am astounded at the amount of growth that takes place from the beginning of fifth grade to the end of fifth grade. To take away a full year of this opportunity for this growth, I think would be catastrophic to the program as a whole. The high school here has a dream team of music teachers that rely so much on the success of these programs starting early to continue their success. Quickly, my son Luke took a field trip to Walker yesterday. He's in fourth grade, and they got to tour. He came home, all he could talk about was which... Oh, I'm out of time. He talked about how great it was. What orchestra is he going to be in? Is he going to be in band? What's he going to do? And then my third student Jane is in second grade at Greenbrier. She will be the first-year students that will be experiencing this new restructuring, and I wonder what's her story going to be when she reaches fifth grade? Is she going to have the same opportunities that my daughter and son will have next year? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Karen Little, parent of a C.H.S. and a Buford student. Yesterday, I was speaking with a community member who works in the early childhood space and who was part of the strategic planning, stakeholder engagement process for the division's strategic planning process. And I expressed to them surprise that kindergarten readiness is not an explicit metric being tracked in the strategic plan. And the person said, yeah, I know. I'm really surprised, too. And I... But it wasn't a choice. It wasn't a choice we had. The process was so curated. And I just walked away from that feeling like, in a way, this safety process and the kind of fallout from the November reset has been a limited and curated choice process. And believe me, I know stakeholder engagement is so... It's hard. So, and I know you all want the best for our students. I come with that heart for sure. And I've already spoken about the research and the ineffectiveness of weapons detectors and the danger of building a culture of fear and distress. I'm not going to rehash that tonight, but I'm channeling Derek's curiosity and just also wonder about the use of funds and time and capacity, specifically on the first two safety recommendations being presented tonight, both of which I feel are in short supply in our division, time and money, and have a few wonders as well. So, I also wonder if we could allocate that money and time to hiring and supporting site-based substitutes or any of the other things that we desperately pitched to the city, and the city, at this point, doesn't seem like it's going to fully fund our request. I also wonder if we had been given the choice to vote for some of the other themes that were in the slides, like increased mental health support, increased counselors, restorative practices, a positive school climate initiative here at the high school. And I wonder if we could truly do the hard collaborative work to foster a strong sense of community here, where every student and staff member is seen and valued and not reduce our students to risks to be mitigated against. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here in the media center? And then we may have had somebody who signed up online. I don't know if Catherine Starks is there.
No, but if you are online and you would like to speak three minutes at this point in public speaking, just please raise your hand so we can promote you to speaking roles.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on. We do have another opportunity towards the end of the meeting. So, thank you, everybody. Our next section here is comments from students. I don't think I see any students in the media center or online. So, we'll move on. And then our next section is our report from Ms. Maggie.
Oh, my goodness. All right. Well, first of all, I just want to start by saying this is my last meeting here. So, I'm so, so grateful. Kind of tying into what I'm about to say, I'm really grateful for the opportunities that you've given me and you've given the student body recently. I think, speaking on behalf of a lot of us, we've noticed that increase and we've noticed the increase in transparency, and it's really appreciated. I guess for my report, you know, something I personally really saw as a great thing was, I think it was yesterday or before, all teachers were encouraged to give the... for their students to fill out the three safety surveys. And I think that was something that needed to be done because, you know, it's gone in our email and ParentSquare. But to be honest, I don't think many of my, you know, seventeen-year-old peers are like looking through further, you know, what surveys can I fill out on CCS, unfortunately? Although they are very, very fun to fill out, and I do them. I guess on a more personal note for me, it's the spring season now, and that's coming around, which is crazy to say, but it's... We're coming closer to graduation and closer to the end of the school year for the senior class, myself included. I would love to encourage the school board, the administration, to work closely with the Charlottesville City... Charlottesville High School Student Council Association, as well as student body in general, as we're planning a lot of separate student activities and just fundraisers and everything for these plans. Just to say a few, and I know they're in the works. We are planning to have a senior sunset. I know earlier in the year, we had a senior sunrise, which got some media attention, which I think was a really great highlight. It'll be after our last day of school. We'll all watch the sun go down, a cute little, you know, aesthetic moment. There'll be a senior trip, a senior picnic, graduation, of course, pep rallies. And on a... The most personal note for me, the reason that I bring this up is, you know, our class has been through a lot, to say the least, starting with COVID, going through everything we've gone through, I guess, three different principles we've had. For me, you know, this year was a hard one. I lost one of my teammates on the baseball team, Aiden Peters, this summer to cancer. He was one of my really, really great friends, and he had a great impact on this community. For me, I have tried to push for our senior gift to be a memorial in some way for Aiden. And I think that working together, we're stronger together. And I think that, you know, we all... A lot of the seniors have these, you know, passions, these stories to tell. And I think it's really, really important that these activities are prioritized as we near the end of the school year because, you know, as we've said a million times, you know, there are so many positive things at the school, and that's really what deserves to be recognized. And, you know, what... The attention that, you know, we really, we really need. So, I really appreciate all that you guys are doing, and thank you.
Thank you, as always, and we appreciate you. Okay. Moving on, we now have student and staff recognition. And that would be Ms. Raznick.
Good evening. Madam Chair, Dr. Gurley, members of the board. I'm here tonight to acknowledge our school's social workers and the essential work that they do in our schools and our community with students, staff, and families. So, Governor Youngkin has proclaimed March as Social Work Month, and the School Social Worker Association recognizes this first week as School Social Work Week. School social workers are exceptionally skilled in providing services to students who face serious challenges to school success. That includes disability, poverty, discrimination, abuse, neglect, mental illness, homelessness, bullying, family stressors, and other barriers. Our school social workers have provided support to families in finding homes when they've been without staple housing for over a year. They facilitated programs such as Buford Eats to provide basic needs to families and students. Our team has provided essential mental health services as community waitlists have gotten longer and longer and longer. If a student or member of their family has needed support, our social workers have connected them with school-based and community services to ensure their success. By building relationships with all students and families in our schools, our school social workers are positioned to recognize changes in behavior or affect and alert families and provide preventative services. My family has benefited from that, and I know many of our families do. In short, they have saved lives. So, I want to thank you for your commitment to providing all students with access to this essential personnel and ask that you join me in recognizing them this week. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, if I may have a motion for adoption of our consent agenda, please.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. And now we move on to items for discussion.
All right. Our first item up on our agenda, we have Dr. Kim Wilkinson. And Will Kinson, I'm sorry. And she will be joined by her team, I think, yes, Dr. Chu. And they will give us an overview of the... An update on the lab school. Thank you both.
Yes, thank you so much for this opportunity. Dean Rowley sends her regards, but she wasn't able to join us today. So, we're going to give you an update on the UVA Innovation Hub at Charlottesville Middle School. And from Charlottesville City Schools' perspective, some of the key components of the school are to increase middle school engagement in school and in STEM, to provide P.D. that helps teachers connect different content areas in ways that are relevant and builds on assets of students, and to increase middle school student performance on state assessments. And the mission and vision of the school... Sorry, next slide. And the next slide. So, the mission of... Can I do it here? Okay, sorry. The mission of the UVA Innovation Hub is to engage all students in personally meaningful, computationally rich, and interdisciplinary learning. And the vision of the UVA Innovation Hub is to provide educational opportunities that inspire curiosity, fuel innovation, and empower all students to solve problems and pursue lifelong learning. So, the lab school is envisioned to be embedded within Charlottesville Middle School. And the UVA Innovation Hub will be the conduit for connecting resources from UVA with CMS. Initially, the lab school will work with science teachers, and all students will have time scheduled in the UVA... in the UVA Innovation Hub to work on projects that integrate science content. The science teachers will also be part of the Innovation Academy Fellowship, which provides substantial financial support. And this year-long cohort-based program will include a summer curriculum design academy, personalized coaching, and mentoring throughout the year, and valuable externship opportunities. And then by year three, we envision that teachers from other subject areas will be able to join the Innovation Academy Fellowship. And we envision that those teachers who've already been through the academy will be potential collaborators for interdisciplinary projects and advocates of project-based learning at CMS. And this is how the school... We envision the school operating. So, the model is that every grade... every student in every grade will come through the Innovation Hub. We'll actually start year one in seventh grade, and those students will work on two integrated science projects. Year two will add on eighth grade, and those students will work on capstone projects. And then by year three, that's when sixth grade joins CMS, and then those students will start building the skills and experience they need to work on their projects going forward. And you can see sort of what UVA is bringing to the table and what CCS is bringing to the table as far as making the Innovation Hub work. So, we really have three sort of guiding principles for the Innovation Hub: to develop a community of practice, to engage all students, and to make meaningful community connections. And thanks to a lab school planning grant, we've actually been able to try out a lot of activities that are going to be the building blocks for the lab school. So, for the guiding principle of developing a community of practice, we started with the Summer Curriculum Design Academy with pre- and in-service teachers. And then we continue to support in-service teachers during the school year. And most recently, we modeled project-based learning projects in seventh and eighth-grade science classroom. And we'll continue to iterate on this model for the Innovation Academy Fellowship experience through research and evaluation. For engaging all students, we created a computer science pathway with the Summer Starhill Pathway Program as a way to try out projects and ideas and link that experience to the Innovation Academy... the Curriculum Design Accelerator so that teachers can see this PBL in action. And then again, in January, we modeled PBL, the Integrated Computer Science Concepts, with science SLOs. And these are the type of projects that we envision the sixth and seventh-grade students will be doing in the Innovation Hub as they gain skills they need to tackle their capstone project. And for the guiding principle of making meaningful connections, we use the summer CS pathway and PBA opportunities to connect with community organizations, including Willow Tree, Burnt Brain Technology, C4K, UVA School of Data Science, and UVA Biomedical Engineering. We also held an inaugural Charlottesville Random Hacks of Kindness in January, and we envision that as a lab school outreach event to model engaging students in real-world problem-solving with mentors from industry. And the Real World Problem Statement shared by local community organizations, and for instance, Charlottesville Community Bikes was our organization this year, can then be infused into the UVA Innovation Hub curriculum.
Hello, I'm Dr. Jenny Chu. I'm an associate professor at the University of Virginia. Thank you for having me here tonight. And I'm going to segue into the governing board. So the UVA Innovation Hub governing board will consist of UVA School of Education and Human Development and Equity Center representatives, as well as Charlottesville City Schools representatives. It will also include a community partner and a family student advisory council representative. And here is the overview of the budget. And so the $6.35 million budget over five years includes a personnel budget to hire a director, a lab manager, and two innovation specialists that will be working at Buford or Charlottesville Middle School. The budget also includes the Innovation Academy Fellowship incentives for six educators taking part in this and professional learning experiences and materials to support student project creation. And so even though this funding is coming to UVA, the vast majority of it is going directly into Charlottesville Middle School. And so you can see in the next slide, $1.5 million is going directly to Charlottesville Middle School for capital improvements to renovate and update the four science classrooms to host the UVA Innovation Hub. And for sustainability, we have plans to engage community stakeholders. We're going to partner with UVA's EHD Foundation for development efforts and secure additional research funding to augment this effort. Thank you very much and we are open for questions.
One of the things we, you may want to share on Monday, the approval process, just to bring the board up to speed with that.
Sure. So we are now going through the VDOE approval process. We submitted the application in November. We had our first review with the lab school standing committee in January. Yeah, sorry. And then we got past that and the application went up for public comment. And this past Monday, we just went up for our second review with the standing committee and we have been past that. And so they have now recommended that we go to the Board of Education on March 28th to present the lab school. And it might be one and like, it might be a first and final review. So if we get approved by the Board of Education on March 28th, then there is a 90-day clock to get all our contracts and memorandums and understanding and all that in place.
Board members, any questions? Mr. Meyer?
Yes, thank you ladies for, I think, a very interesting presentation. Like I say, I am, in general, I think, excited about this because I, you know, a great opportunity, I think, to offer more STEM opportunities and learning opportunities, excuse me, for our students. Also, you know, potential, again, it sounds like to develop our staff and then more science teachers that could serve our district, if I understand things correctly, right? Okay. I am a little concerned about the financials. What I just heard was that everything is going through UVA?
Yeah, so a lab school is, it has to go through a college or university. So all the funds have to come through us. And then, for instance, with the capital improvements, that is something we were hoping could go directly to Charlottesville City Schools, but the way it works with VDOE, it all has to come through UVA. So we're doing a sub award for that. And then the personnel that we're embedding into Charlottesville Middle School are going to be UVA employees, so paid by UVA.
Okay. Because then going back to slide seven, I see we have a bunch of responsibilities over on CCS side. So there will be passed through to CCS to pay for the services that we will be providing as part of this partnership? Because there's a lot of responsibilities we have there.
Yeah. Yeah, so a lot of that is sort of existing things, but there is a lot of incentives for the educators that are part of the fellowship. So there's quite an additional, is it 20K per year for those people that are working on the Innovation Hub experience for students?
Our staff will get extra top-ups from UVA or somehow pass through to then take care of these additional responsibilities that we're responsible for. Okay. And then you're saying that, again, on that slide, we're going to see a million and five worth of capital improvements that are, that's part of the agreement that's going to come through and to happen?
Yes, so that's part, that's upgrading the science classrooms, since they're not part of the upgrade from the rest of CMS. And those will go directly, passed through directly to.
Okay, and then two more questions, sorry. There was the governing board, it looks like there's going to be three members of UVA staff that are going to be, and then two members of, from CCS? And so in theory, UVA could override us if there, or is decision-making process going to be consensus?
Yes.
Decision-making is going to be consensus and that's going to be the government? Okay. Thanks. And then with all I see, all this research and I participate in research in the past and I guess my, my hope is that some of the Charlottesville City School people will also be participating in the research and having their names on the papers?
Oh, yes.
Et cetera, so it's not being used for sample data?
No, you'll be actively involved. So we'll, this will be what's called a research-practice partnership. And so, yeah, we'll definitely want to have the educators, especially that are involved in this as part of it, students, parents that want to be involved, for sure.
So when there's papers that are published, CCS staff will be on?
If they work on them, they'll be, they'll be on them.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I have a couple of questions, but struggling with my voice a little bit today. In regards to the, the first year, we have slated for two integrated projects. Could you share a little bit how that was determined?
I think it was the amount of time that we would have students to work on those projects. And I think that could be subject to change depending on how things go with the projects. But we wanted to, you know, do something in the first half of the year and something in the second half of the year. And we also, because this will be the first time, especially with seventh grade, that we're kind of doing this, there'll be some amount of just prepping for, you know, the tools and the skills and that kind of stuff. So I think it's our best guess right now.
And in terms of skill building, that also relates to my question, year three, I'm assuming that's going to be a little bit informed by what you see in year one and two.
Exactly.
But what, what do you expect to see at this, at this moment in terms of what skills are going to be built or what tools will they be using?
Well, I can give you, for example, the projects that we did in January involve robotics. And so it was getting them hands-on with some robotics tools. And the goal was to take some computer science standards and some science standards and find how we could integrate them. So for instance, the seventh grade project was a biobot project. It was taking animal adaptations, thank you, and mimicking them in robotics and how that's actually done in the real world. So it's a combination of figuring out the right SLOs and to combine and then figuring out the right tools to do it. So it could be robotics, it could be a coding project, it could be lots of different things.
Awesome, awesome, sounds great. I, I have one more question, maybe, I guess, a question, maybe you should enlighten me a little bit. In terms of the capital improvements, there's $200,000 for soundboards and enhancing acoustics. And I'm just, maybe you can enlighten me on just a little bit more. For me, it feels counterintuitive to what we're saying, we want to do projects and being $80,000 more than tech updates. I don't know.
Right. So having been in those spaces now, I was also, you know, wondering about those, what we're, how we're dividing it up. But having been in those spaces now, you know, it can get very loud and chaotic when you're doing a project-based learning and we definitely experienced that. So this is something I think the teachers actually asked for. And so we felt that that was important to, you know, do something that they thought they needed in the classroom. And now having been through it, I think we agree.
Okay.
And then the numbers, I mean, these are numbers we got from city staff, so.
Okay. I know the fantastic work that both of you have done and I'm greatly appreciative that you're working through this with us. I guess I just, me personally, I just see clearer lectures. And so my project brain goes, whoa, 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 back off the lectures, let's do the projects. So awesome, thank you.
My questions are in regards to staffing, knowing at Buford that we have been struggling with science positions this year. I think we still have two vacancies. See Mr. Jordan back there? So all that aside, so what are, like, how are we going to make sure that we are actually staffing this incredible program that we're building when we haven't been able to do so?
Right, well, I think, I think one thing we're certainly hoping is that the added incentive of the 20K to be part of this process project will be enticing to folks and that we're trying out some new and different things with the project-based learning, we're hoping. I mean, we, both of us have already had people interested in these positions. So, you know, we're hopeful that we can find folks to do it, but it is a challenge.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Gurley, members of the board. So right now, yes, we do have one life science teacher position being filled by a long-term sub. And then we also have a science learning facilitator position that is unfilled at the time. I will say we have recommended someone to fill the vacancy for next year and they've accepted the position.
Ms. Richardson, any questions? No? Ms. Heffey? Thank you. This is really exciting. I mean, I wish I could go back to school and take science over and participate.
My other comment was very fun to hear CMS be said as the name. It took me a second to catch up with that, but I love it.
And I also want to make sure that you all know that Dr. Tanya Coffey, I think I see her back there, she's been very instrumental on the Charlottesville City School side. I take no credit, Dr. Odie takes no credit. I mean, it's been, she's been our labor of love on this side. So she's been working very hard to do this lift on our behalf. So I do appreciate her and I want you all to know that that's who's doing the work on our end.
Yeah, and I would just echo that this would not be possible without this wonderful partnership that we have with CCS. So we really appreciate it.
No, we appreciate everything that you're, you're bringing to the community and for our students. So thank you very much. Quick question, there's something else that was unique about this proposal, wasn't there? I mean, were we the only middle school?
We're, we're the only.
Please speak to that.
Also the only whole school. So it was very important from the very beginning that this impacted all students. It wasn't some separate thing that was just for a few. So that is unique. In effect, for a while, they were like, is that a lab school? And then they decided it wasn't.
Yes, so I mean, maybe you just said this, but so all the other models, it was taking kids out of the school for the program, whereas we are bringing this into the school. So I think that is so important for this community to hear. I mean, that's just wonderful. So, so thank you for that. Mr. Morris, did you have another question? No? And then I didn't know if, if you mentioned positions, Ms. Dooley, that if, if this can be used or worked at all as far as marketing for some of these positions, if we can just elevate this wonderful opportunity when we are listing those, those FTEs might be something we could consider. Thank you both very much.
All right. Next, we have Ms. Fitzgerald. I think I see her peeking over the bookshelf back there. She's up with our Career and Technical Education Local Plan for the 2425 school year.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Gurley. I am Megan Fitzgerald and I'm the CTE Instructional Specialist for Charlottesville City Schools. I'm here to present to you the Carl Perkins Local Plan for the 2425 school year, which is a federal grant used to help fund our career and technical education programs at Buford, Charlottesville High School, and K-Tech. Before I present to you our budget and our goals for spending, I wanted to give you a brief overview of our CTE program and how we did last year. So currently, our CTE program at Charlottesville City Schools offers 16 out of 17 career clusters that the Virginia Department of Education recognizes. With these career clusters, we provide opportunities for students to explore over 30 career pathways. While students are moving through CTE program concentrations or trying out a new pathway, we offer 20 different state-recognized industry credentials. We currently have 1,362 students enrolled in a CTE course in grades seven through 12, and that's including K-Tech. At the end of every school year, we identify the CTE completers upon successful completion of two CTE sequential courses. And the two, in the 2023 cohort, we had 134 CTE completers, which makes up almost half of the graduating class. Next slide. Here is the historical CTE enrollment data over the last three years. This number reflects duplicated counts, so we have students who are enrolled in more than one CTE course. Our biggest CTE programs are engineering with 283 students, computer science with 107, photography with 78, marketing with 73, and K-Tech with 72. Next slide. As mentioned earlier, we offer 20 different industry credentials at CHS and K-Tech. The most common one is the Workplace Readiness Assessment, which assesses students on the common core competencies that are embedded in all CTE courses and curriculum. In the 2223 school year, we gave this out to current CTE students in grades nine through 12, and we had 172 students who received this credential. In total, we had about 418 credentials awarded with 371 given more than, given to students more than once. So they've had more than one credential. This is just great for job acquisition and marketability as students can use these certifications showing that they have an understanding of soft skills and/or technical skills needed in the workforce. Next slide. Work-based learning is an integral part of career and technical education. We see great success at both K-Tech and CHS with students participating in internships, externships, and service learning. This is a continued focus of improvement for our CTE program collectively, as work-based learning takes a lot of coordination, documentation, and follow-up for students to be successful in their job placement. Next slide. Just last year, the school was measured on the CCCRI index as a part of our accreditation process. The CCCRI stands for College Career and Civic Readiness Index. This measures the unduplicated count of students in the on-time graduation cohort who meet at least one of the five criteria. Passing at least one APDE or IB course and receiving credit, being a CTE completer with a passing industry credential, successful completion of a work-based learning experience, successful completion of a service learning project, or taking three JROTC courses with a passing industry credential. Next slide. In this slide, you see two pie charts. On the left represents the breakdown of last year's cohort. We had a total of 295 seniors who graduated last year. Out of those 295, we had an unduplicated count of 225 seniors who received the CCCRI credit by either having an APDE course, being a CTE completer with a past credential, or receiving a work-based learning experience. That left us with 70 seniors that did not receive a CCCRI credit. Overall, our percentage of CCCRI credited students is 76%, 76%, which gave us a Level Two accreditation. Taking a look at the cohort of 2024, we have 299 students in this cohort. Here you can see the breakdown of how many students in the cohort who have received a CCCRI credit. We cannot determine the unduplicated count at this time, but I am able to identify which students or which seniors do not have a current CCCRI credit at all. And right now, we currently have 94 students without a CCCRI credit, which estimates us at 69%, which puts us at a Level Three accreditation. There are plans put into place to bring that CCCRI up, which is working with Virginia Career Works on coordinating work-based learning opportunities and KUP for internship and externship placements. Next slide. Here are the goals for the 2425 school year to help with program growth. Our first goal is to focus on the plans of study. This aligns with Priority One, Target Three, and the Division's Strategic Plan. We want to ensure that we build out more CTE courses at the new middle school that is aligned with the courses at the high school and K-Tech. With this, we hope to have continued growth and enrollment in our CTE programs. Our next goal is to support our teachers with CTE curriculum, but specifically regarding our career and technical student organizations, or known as CTSOs. This aligns with Priority One, Target Two, of the Division's Strategic Plan. This year, we've had CTSO state advisors work with teachers during professional learning days, so they feel ready- This year, we've had CTSO state advisors work with teachers during professional learning days, so they feel ready for the next school year. However, this may still require professional learning outside of CCS, which will yield costs such as registration and travel. This is important, as CTSOs are required for all CTE teachers, as the programs are co-curricular. Lastly, we want to create stronger systems for work-based learning to support students with college and career readiness. This aligns with Priority 1, Target 8 in the Strategic Plan. Our hope is to provide more opportunities for students to learn, explore, and participate in career events in the division or throughout the city with our business and industry partners. The foundational work of building a strong system for work-based learning will also help with the overall CCCRI numbers as well. Next slide. These goals implicitly and explicitly align with our spending priorities for next school year. Our estimated budget for next school year is $106,782.19. Our priorities for spending will primarily focus on K-Tech. Around 90% of this budget will go to help with the professional learning needs and equipment needs for their programs. Most of K-Tech's instructors are professionals from industry with no prior teaching experience. Additionally, K-Tech instructors have technical professional licenses, which require them to take classes in industry exams to keep their certification current. These funding allocations for professional learning will support K-Tech instructors with also staying current with best teaching practices as well. While CHS and Beaufort CTE teachers will need professional learning, most of the professional learning will be utilized through professional learning days in the division. The biggest need for our budget is equipment, which K-Tech will be utilizing most of it. And we want to help them because we want to make sure that their equipment is up to industry standards. Beaufort and CHS teachers are all equipped with recently refreshed lab spaces and equipment. So for the next school year, the local budget can sustain the majority of the equipment needs for both middle and high school teachers. This concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Ms. Richardson, do you have any questions? Ms. Dooley? Ms. Cooper? Mr. Morse? Or should we come back to you? Mr. Meyer?
Just saw that there's a little bit of decline in percentage of students graduating, I think with one of the, was it CCRI? Do you have any observations why that might be the case?
With the CCCRI? Well, we're seeing, I think with COVID numbers, we're seeing less students who are able to take classes. Or we're seeing more students who aren't able to take as many classes because of credit recovery, the way that our master schedule is set up. So a lot of students aren't able to either maybe take an AP or DE class, or be a CTE completer, or pass a credential, or maybe they don't have the time to do a work-based learning experience, because they already have things set in their day.
And then just, in general, our CTE enrollment is, as student demand for the classes, et cetera, and we're seeing participation in the classes is staying high or where we want it to be?
Yeah, it is staying high. And right now, we're in the middle of academic advising. I mean, just last year, we had to kind of shift around with master scheduling with, because we have so many kids who want to take our classes. So we're seeing an actually an overflow of like, where can we put our kids? So we are seeing really great numbers, which is great.
Actually, I'll, I'll be pretty quick. I guess my first question is, could you just maybe do a quick summary of how like work-based learning is recorded? I like, I know how it works in my division that I, I work in, but for, for Charlottesville, Charlottesville City Schools, could you do a quick summary of like how we record that? And then I might have a follow-up in, in terms of, we know that students are working, but they might not be recorded, and how we can kind of bridge that gap? Because I think that might be like an easy solution, but maybe you can give some more information of how we do that in CCS.
Sure. So right now, we are trying to create systems on how we can catch. So like, we're trying to create a net of the students who are doing internships outside of CTE courses. And so what does that system look like so that we're making, that we make sure that we document all of those kids who are doing internships or externships, maybe over the summer, over winter break, or outside of a CTE course? Because it is best practice to make sure that those are being embedded in our CTE courses. But as far as documenting and capturing that, I am, I, I am identifying, or students, or teachers are identifying, or counselors are identifying which students are actually participating in a work-based learning experience. And I make sure that the proper paperwork is being used and tracked and recorded. And then I collect the paperwork, and then I document all the paperwork at the end, and then we document it in Power School with Ann Skipper. So we become best friends in the summer with all of the documentation that we have to do.
Would there be an opportunity to engage some nonprofits on like helping to, to assist tracks? So, excuse me, to assist with tracking some work-based learning? What comes to mind immediately for me is C4K, because I know they have an extensive mentorship program. I'm currently working with Abundant Life, and I know that we have a V-Trace program. If I'm not mistaken, City of Promise, some of their programs would align with what we're seeing for work-based learning and some of the requirements. Would there be like, could we partnership in, in terms of like, hey, we have the paper, we can help, help the student fill that out and then get it back to you? Does that still fit within tracking?
Oh yeah, absolutely. Annie Seacrest at KUP, she has been a great partner of mine. And so she does a lot of the tracking and paperwork, and so she gives me the paperwork at the end, what's a student successfully completes an internship and an externship. So it's, it's definitely, we can, if partnership, our partners are comfortable with wanting to hold the paperwork and keep the documentation, then I am all for it, absolutely. And I think that's a great practice. I think some may be kind of weary because it is student information, or, you know, they don't want to be responsible for losing it. So, but yeah.
Yeah, that, I, I just know that there, there are so many opportunities that, that community organizations are already trying to like assist with. I think we just need to connect that communication piece, so that it goes into our records as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Maggie?
Mike, this mic does not like me. I'm really sorry. Okay, I have two quick questions, Ms. Fitzgerald, because I promised you I wouldn't talk too much. But the first one is, I noticed in like the CCCRI, it says you can meet the three JROTC courses plus credential. But I'm just gonna, maybe I'm just missing, I don't know what JROTC programs we have.
We don't offer JROTC. It's just I, it is just a VOE definition, so I just put it on there for the board, the members of the board to know.
Okay. And then my second question might be like, question a little bit, but I guess I was just wondering, I noticed that in like the CTE enrollment, the engineering and computer science are the two, I think, yeah, the two highest, like most popular ones. I guess my question is, as we move forward, like, are there any measures being taken to like increase diversity and like inclusion and equity within these programs? Just because I know from a lot of my friends who are in these, and some like own experience, that I know that there's a, a strict demographic that the engineering department, I mean, look at it, it's amazing. And I know kids love it, and it's amazing, but I don't know. I, I know there's some clubs, but I don't know, like, is a CTE program working with like, I don't know, BSA is a club I know of, just like promoting diversity and equity in these fields for the CTE courses, especially in like STEM-based learning things? Again, I'm awful at math, so I'm not the one to know about this stuff, but that's my question.
Oh, absolutely. Mr. Miller and Ms. Gibson are phenomenal teachers, and they recognized that as soon as they started. And they said, how can we serve all of our students? And how can we make this program a reflection of the true population that we have at CHS? And so they are working with recruitment, they are working with going to schools and visiting. They are making sure that we are showcasing engineers that look like everyone, not just the, the demographic that we're used to seeing in the lab. They are making efforts and intentional efforts to make sure that we make sure that every voice and every face is represented in that program. So yes, they are aware, and we are doing the work.
And one thing also, and this is also how the lab school will help us too, because this will get students activated and, and middle school, and get them engaged, and get them excited about those STEM careers and engineering. And that really will help to diversify the programming here at the high school.
Referencing back to the JROTC, I'm curious why we don't have that, or why that is a space we don't currently have.
It's just never been something that's, when, when I do student interest assessments every single year, it's just not one that's very popular amongst the students. And also, it's really hard to find instructors who are able to teach, so it would be a staffing issue as well. CTE programs, the best practice is to make sure that we are aligned with our labor market needs, but as well as our student interest needs. So it's never been a course that I've actually pushed, you know, or questioned principals or executive leadership, like huh, like why have we never had this course? Because just kids just haven't seemed interested in it.
Yeah, I think, you know, when we talk about the whole picture of a graduate and all the options that could be afforded to our students, I personally, you know, just have a, you know, a little bit of an interest there to understand what that really looks like for our students. And I know we have a recruiter that does come in and tries to make connections with the students. I just wonder, you know, if, if there was another approach to that, that, you know, we could fully understand that a little bit better.
And I did JROTC when I was a freshman, and I really liked it, but I know that it's not for everybody, but.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry. I do have one more comment, comment. Maybe in the future, does not have to be like a, a follow-up, okay? Not a follow-up. But maybe in the future, could we get a breakdown of either, or maybe both, completer plus credential in work-based learning in regards to our sped students?
Absolutely. I can get that to you right away.
But not right away. You don't need to do it right away.
I can get that to you. Yes, sir.
So if, Ms. Fitzgerald, if you do have it and can email it to the board later, I mean, if it's something easy to get, if not?
Yes, it's relatively easy to get. Yes, I can get that for you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. And this will, and this will come back to you at the next board meeting for, she'll come back at the next board meeting for approval for action. Thank you. Next up, we have Dr. Denise Johnson. She will give us a strategic plan update slash data dashboard update.
Just waiting for my presentation to come up. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Gurley. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. Tonight's presentation will provide a high-level overview of our public-facing strategic plan data dashboard process and its current status. To prepare for this presentation, you were given a link to the dashboard show. What you find on that link is not the final version of the dashboard. Based on previous recommendations from the 2021 Division Level Equity Committee, the dashboard should tell a complete story of our work. To do so, they thought it was important to incorporate a multitude of information, including data metrics, a narrative explanation, and the division's response to address areas of improvement. They also recommended that there be a general equity overview preceding each area. Additionally, they recommended, recommended that the, that the dashboard webpage include both quantitative and qualitative data. They felt the overarching goals of the dashboard should be to present a user-friendly tool that is accessible to multiple stakeholders, and that represents an asset-based approach to student, student thriving that centers the whole child and informs our practices and policies to support equity across the, the division. When considering the dashboard, I wanted to create this presentation to better explain the process and make sure that you were aware of the history of the work and how our historical and current work, our current work overlapped. So here's a timeline of our dashboard history. In 2020, Dr. Atkins, our former superintendent, charged the Division Level Equity Committee at that time with making a data dashboard recommendation of up to 10 data points and/or metrics for CCS to use as a way to track its equity goals. In 2021, the committee made those recommendations, which was also intertwined within our inclusive excellence framework. The framework was designed to create an infrastructure for equity within CCS. It consisted of equity goals, objectives, and strategic metrics, which we wanted to guide our work as a community and affirm, and affirm that we are all mutually accountable for our outcomes. As we transitioned into new leadership with Dr. Gurley, it underwent ongoing discussions about not wanting a standalone framework, but one that was instead embedded in the foundation of CCS. The decision was made to incorporate all these things into our new strategic plan. Now, in the spring of 2024, we're in the final phases of its initial completion. And so that's how everything ties together. Our next slide is where I want you to be able to see how the work we've historically done fits into our current strategic plan. Here is an overview of the recommended priority areas and metrics of our previous work. At the top of the slide, you will see our four key focus areas from the onset of our equity work starting in 2018. And those areas were supportive and supportive staff, diverse, inclusive, and rigorous learning experiences, growing relationships and equity foundations. And then in the middle of the slide, you will see our 2021 data dashboard goals and recommendations, which were adding links to the school quality profile under the appropriate equity, equity goal, data around teacher recruitment, hiring, and retention, the teacher climate survey data, and the focus group feedback, equity trainings and professional development, and the school climate survey along with student group feedback. The inclusive excellence framework at the very bottom includes objectives and goals around access and success, culture and climate, education and training, organizational infrastructure, and family and community engagement. And so you should see elements of all this work included in the current strategic plan. When we were meeting as a group, we were very intentional about including, incorporating this information into our strategic plan. And so, as you know, our current strategic plan has four priority areas and targets within those areas. And so the slide shows those four priority areas, and at the bottom, we have those targets. And so the data metrics and the webpage are being built around those targeted areas on the previous slide, which you could begin to see in the dashboard show. When the page, webpage is completed, we will be attempting to tell the story of the complex issues of equity using different deliverables, including an equity overview as the webpage, at the webpage intro and before each priority area, which was again a recommendation of the 2021 Equity Committee. We will also be using the data points and visual graphs, which can be found on the link you were given. And we will also be using PDFs and attachments. An example of this would be our Professional Learning Day catalogs for our professional learning targets and links to additional websites, including the school quality profile and the governor's scorecard on nutrition and physical activity where appropriate. And so our next steps will be to gather the final feedback on the visualization of this webpage, which we are hoping you will take the opportunity to offer this evening. We will take the next several weeks to ensure that the targets where we want to have actual graphs and charts are included in the dashboard show. And together, the Technology Department, Communications Specialist, and Director of Assessment and Accountability will build out the webpage and hope that all of it is completed by the end of the school year, May 31st. And so I certainly hope that you found this presentation helpful. I will now pause for discussion and also invite our Director of Technology to the podium, just in case you have some technology-related questions that he can assist with. And thank you all for allowing me to present with you, present to you this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Sure.
Any questions down that way? No? Mr. Meyer?
Thanks for this presentation, Dr. Johnson, and I have looked at the, it looks like it's a Google platform. There's some kind of that, again, where you're starting to populate some of the graphs and the data. I appreciate that. Who, from a staffing perspective, is going to continue to kind of, I like that we develop tools like this, but it requires someone to put in the data also. So is that going to fall under your office and your responsibilities, or I guess who in the staff, Dr. Gurley? You know, who in the staff is going to be responsible for keeping this updated?
Mr. Cuomo's easing his weight down here because it will be staffed in his office. It will still be a team effort in combination with the people names, but Mr. Cuomo's department will take the lead on it.
Yeah, it'll, we have great data people on my team, but the data will come from places like Carolyn Swift and sources that we're already using. So it wouldn't be like an overhaul lift. We'd be just using the existing data that we're determining and putting it in this public-facing, in these public-facing graphs.
Okay, so there's kind of some visualization work, basically, and then, but in theory, it's just pulling data from different data sets we already have. And then you're imagining updating this every six months, three- And then you're imagining updating this every six months, three months. I mean, obviously, each metric or each thing might be a little bit different, but.
Yeah, I think the goal is annually, but I think as we, as we get this relevant data, the point of this is to be a living ecosystem that, that we're constantly looking at. So I think as data becomes available, it's going to be an intentionality thing where we take that and an update thing so people can continue to see uh, the most relevant picture of the data that we're presenting.
Thank you.
Was burned. Mr. Morse? Maggie, did you, I didn't mean to miss you down there. Ms. Cooper? No questions. Ms. Dooley? Ms. Richardson? Any comments, questions?
Thank you.
So I know this is a long time coming. A lot of work, a lot of years, a lot of stakeholders, I mean, sat at tables and gave some great feedback to you and your team, and, and you guys have done a lot of great work. So I'm really excited that, like, you know, that the equity dashboard, I know that we started talking about the, the dashboard for the strategic plan, but that, that we're going to be able to integrate them both. Yeah, so I'm really excited to see the final product. I mean, what, what do you need from us?
The only thing I need is if you have any feedback on what you like the visual product to look like, or you have some ideas of what you imagine the dashboard to look like when you pull it up, just go ahead and share that with me at your convenience, and we'll continue to work hard and try to keep you in the loop of where we are.
I know we had some preliminary kind of ideas. I'd have to go back and pull notes, but I'd love, yeah, maybe I'll reach out to you and stop by sometime or make an appointment, if I may. Anybody else?
That came up just like as the feedback when there are all of the acronyms that exist in our work. Having, I don't know if there's a glossary or something that's linked there. Um, like a link within the map graphs that take parents to understand what that means. Yeah, C C, how many Cs are in that C C C R I? So just, I think we're used to a lot of the terminology, but looking at it through, um, you know, a layperson's eyes.
Perfect.
Any other thoughts? So will we have an opportunity, um, so May, May thirty-first, but to see like a rough draft so that we, or do we just kind of keep checking in and then can give you feedback along the way?
I'll work with Mr. Cuomo to see if he can have an internal link so you all can follow along with the progress. Sure.
Okay, that would be great. Um, I mean, the only thought that I have that I think is probably more related to the strategic plan was wanting to make sure that we really anchor, um, the base metric, the starting point. So from the, the new strategic plan, um, when we're looking at goals and targets and, and whether we're meeting those, that that remains fixed as we roll and update from year to year. I don't know, or, or to talk about that, I think.
I want to make sure I, we get the visualization together. I think the initial idea was to have every year for the next five years of, of the plan and just have our starting point be two thousand twenty-two or twenty-three and then grow from there. But if that's different than what you're thinking, let's talk about it.
Okay, let's talk. Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else? Anybody? Okay, I'm excited. I'm excited. Thank you.
Yep, and I do want to thank Dr. Johnson and, um, Ms. Chuck, uh, because this strategic plan work, um, was a heavy lift, um, for them. And they engaged so many people in this process, um, throughout our community and staff. Um, and so this is really, um, Charlottesville commu-, this is our community's strategic plan, um, for the people, by the people. All right.
Uh, excuse me, I just, and a lot of, there's an intersection between the, the community who is involved in the strategic plan and the Equity Committee. I mean, there was a lot of just wonderful people who showed up and put in a lot of time. Um, so it's pretty exciting to see this all come together. So thank you again.
All right, next up, we get to talk about something great, the, um, middle school project.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Eck, I mean, Dr. Dr. Gurley, I'm sorry. Long, long week. Um, I'm really happy to talk to you all about the middle school, um, update. Uh, this first image is a, a view from the job camera on a sunny day, which has been a little more rare lately. But it's a great image. Um, and you can see, you may recall, those of you who've been following this for a long time, the concept of building in the bowl. Well, this is what building in the bowl looks like. Um, that sloped area that used to go down to the gym building. The next several slides give you more of an up-close view. This is, this area here where it's flattened out, this is the general area where the new gym is going to be constructed. Another shot there looking towards the Boys and Girls Club. And then the part that's a little farther along, those are actual building walls going up for the new four-story building, academic building that has art studios and the fitness rooms that are joined the gym are on the lowest level. That is, um, that building, along with the gym building, will be what we move into for what we call the interim year of twenty-five, twenty-six. So not this up, not this coming school year, but the following year. Um, this is just another look. Every time I go to the campus, I'm just fascinated by this, the, the dirt. I know it's still a lot of moving dirt at this point, and they've hit a lot of rock. But, um, it's just fascinating to me how this all works. And you can see the depth that they're going to, um, in order. So basically, the, um, second floor of the new four-story, of the new four-story building ties in with that existing level there where the, the office suite is and then the, the, the current cafeteria space. So those were just some up-close pictures from the job site. What I want to talk about now briefly are some things, just some minor changes um, as we move through the construction process. And this information that you're going to see now went out to the Beaufort community a week or more ago. So Beaufort families were already advised this was happening, but we just want to share this with you as well in case you haven't seen it or heard. The, um, what you see here is the area kind of behind the fine arts building, the auditorium building, between that and D-building. The, the work that's taking place there now is really around, um, electrical transformer that has to, that's being replaced. And so there is construction fence now on that side of the campus as well, but they did put down a nice crush-and-run path. So even though the sidewalk is not accessible, um, there is a good pathway when, um, it's parent drop-off loop. So the kids just walk that way, and you can see it kind of the overhead depiction, and then you can see an actual picture of this, of the site. So that's a little change that's happened in the past thirty days. In this other piece, we thought they were going to be doing it like it was imminent. But now it's not something they're, they're finding they have to do right away, but it's still maybe something they do before the end of school is out. And this will involve, um, adding a gate into, in the construction fence right there in the bus loop. And the main thing we want people, and this would be to help, uh, trucks that are, um, moving dirt or gravel to access parts of the site a little more easy, easier and more efficiently. Um, if they end up doing this, they will have what they called a crossing guard, um, there to make sure that there's no traffic is handled, but because they're, you know, typically, they have the cones out and cars don't really go in front of the school anyway during the day. But we know there's that foot traffic going back and forth to the gym at the Boys and Girls Club. So they will have a safety person there at all times if this gate is in, is whenever a gate is installed and if it's ever pressed into operation. Um, for now, they found that it's, their, their best bet is to continue to take all the dump trucks and stuff in and out of that road behind the building, going between the construction trailers and the back of the cafeteria. So no changes now, but don't be surprised if you do see a gate go in and know that it comes with certain operating, operating parameters that have to be in place if they're using that gate. So these are summary slides that everyone has seen before, but I think they're really a good way to keep everyone's, you know, mind, uh, fixed on where we are now, which is phase one. And then, as I mentioned earlier, phase two is when we move in to the areas that are being constructed now, which would be for the school year twenty-five, twenty-six. And we have started the interim space planning for that time period. Um, and that is, Dr. Odie and I actually just left a meeting this afternoon at Beaufort. We've had several, um, where we're figuring out things like, and this is just a, for example, um, for the fine arts programs, orchestra and theater and so forth. You know, the fine arts building and the current, you know, main building, that gets turned over to the contractor all at the same time. So we're looking at putting orchestra, band, choir into like the fitness room. So you don't have, you don't use the fitness rooms as fitness rooms in the interim year. Those spaces have to be used for other things. And just know that we are puzzling through all that right now. And, um, it's, it's all very, um, exciting work. We're really, um, looking forward to the outcome. And we like to thank everyone for their cooperation as we move through the process. I'm happy to take questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Meyer.
All right. Thank you for this update and the slides. I see dirt moving, walls going up. Are we on schedule?
We are not off schedule. We have lost some days for rain. I say it this way, um, especially early, relatively early in a project. There's lots of space to make up time. Um, but we have lost some, some days have been less productive than we would like because of the rain. But, um, I was talking with the foreman today, and he said that, you know, we've certainly, they've certainly worked under much worse conditions where they've been on job sites with like lots of snow and that type of thing. Um, we're just in a little bit of a wet period right now, so they're dealing with some mud, but uh, on schedule and despite the rock, I don't see Michael Goddard panicking. So we are within budget, but we certainly hope we're done with rock soon.
Questions, questions? Down here to my right, questions, comments?
Can you update us on where the environmental print groups and conversations have landed? And is it possible at some point to get a sneak peek?
Yes, absolutely. So we, the working groups, which were really, really good, they took all the survey, um, input, and they did provide some, uh, concepts that, um, we're excited about. And I think the next update would be a good time for us to bring that forward. We just reconvene what we call the core group. Um, and so the core group is just now, um, they've had one meeting to start receiving that information. And I think they wanted an opportunity to give, have a little bit more discussion around it before we bring it to you all. But, um, yeah, the environmental graphics work is, um, is, is another exciting piece of this. And I think probably by the next update, it would be time to start rolling that or to start giving folks a sneak peek. It won't be final. Um, but it, we have the concepts, I believe, nailed down.
And remember, the next meeting is this month, so it, it may be the May meet, probably the May meeting, because we, the April meeting is this month.
Right, right. We're a little bit compressed with your regular meetings right now. So I would agree with Dr. Gurley. I think May would be a great time to, um, bring forward the concepts and start to share that with the community. I can tell you that it's based around, um, Charlottesville and, and images that are meaningful to the people who live here.
Ms. Richardson, any comments, questions? All right, thank you.
All right, next up, we will have Ms. Powell, and she's going to give us a safety update. And I just want to make sure that I preface by saying, um, before she gets started, that, um, we, um, it was acknowledged by, um, Maggie earlier that, um, we uploaded a presentation on Friday, but, um, we did re-upload another presentation, um, just with a few added slides and more data, because we wanted another push to ensure that we had, um, our students' voice, um, students' voices reflected. And so you'll see that in this presentation, in the updated presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Gurley. So, um, this presentation is a follow-on or continuation of the discussion from your February meeting, where we have been examining three different areas for, uh, improving or continuing to refine our safety model. Um, so we want, we've done, done a big push to get feedback in the area of weapons detection, uh, resource officers, and the cell phone policy. So the stakeholders, of course, we are focused on trying to get input from staff, families, students, and also just the survey was open to the general community as well. Um, Beth Chuck can't be with us this evening, but she did her usual yeoman's work pushing the survey through all these different channels. And as, um, Dr. Gurley mentioned, we did a special push on Monday again to get more student voice in the survey results. The icon on the right is what is, um, still on the homepage of the website, but that's, it's been featured there since your February meeting, uh, soon after the survey was launched. So before we talk about survey results, I'd like to just take a moment to talk about who participated in the survey. So, um, ooh, that is not the right version of the presentation, Leslie. Sorry. It's one, I'm sorry, the date's at the end. It'll say March. That's it, right there. That one. Yep. And I'll advance it once you get it up into slideshow view. Oh, that's the middle school. There we go, safety, March seventh. That one should be it. Uh, I can reshare it, because. Yeah, do it from the PDF. Do it from the PDF. Thanks. The good news is nothing I talked about until we hit that slide is any different.
Yeah, it's the, it's the one.
There we go. Now I know we're in the right one. Okay. Um, so all the data is as of noon, March fifth. That's when I pulled it again. And, um, as far as who participated in the survey, most people, six, uh, sixty-seven percent, or I'm sorry, yeah, sixty-seven percent jumped right in, um, to answering the questions. But, um, about a third, thirty-three percent, did, um, go through the process of learning more about the current safety model. Um, it was predominantly, um, you know, most of the responses came from folks who had an affiliation with CHS, it means, meaning they either worked at CHS or their student is at CHS, or they themselves are a CHS student. Um, gender identity, we did have more females participate than males. And then, um, the survey was structured where people could identify with other, and so that's why there were like two pages. And some of our, uh, I think our students have the most creative, um, answers in some of these questions. Um, so again, the predominance of respondents were white. However, we did make another push, and that did help these numbers some with regard to our student participation. Um, as far as where folks live, most of the respondents live in the city, which is what we were looking for. But we did have some folks also, you know, this would be a lot of our staff who, um, live in Alamo County or surrounding counties. And then there's some that live out, um, elsewhere in Virginia or even outside the state who participated in the survey. Primary role, um, we had forty-two percent pairing, parents slash guardians participate, and then thirty-three percent, um, students. Thanks to that final push, that was really good to see. And then you can see our, our staff members represented about nine percent of the survey respondents. And then we have a, a nice chunk of folks who are staff members who are also parents, and then community members, former students. And then again, there was this other category where people would put in a narrative like, I'm a volun-, I'm a routine volunteer, or I'm a grandparent, things like that. Um, grade level-wise, again, you'll see predominant just, uh, participation from folks who are affiliated with the high school, grades nine through, through twelve. We had a lot of our, um, juniors, our eleventh graders participate. But I think the elementary had good representation as well. And one thing to keep in mind when you look at the data is that not everyone chose to answer the questions about everything. Some people, more people chose to, uh, provide feedback about, um, resource officers and, and the cell phone policy than about the weapons detection for whatever reason, but it wasn't required that you had to answer all the questions. So getting into the survey responses, um, do you think CHS should begin using weapons detection? Um, thirty-eight percent, almost thirty-nine percent, said, uh, both at sporting events and for arrival. Uh, almost thirty-five percent said not at all. So I'll warn you that as we go through this data, um, you're going to see the, the, what we have felt with some of the, um, polarized and very different opinions, uh, in some areas of the survey, you're still going to see that type of divide. Um, now, twenty-one percent of respondents did, uh, express support for using the, uh, weapons detection at sporting events only. Now, what you're going to see for every question is I took, you see the, the raw chart, if you will, of the overall responses. But then I took the responses and broke them down by role and then by race. And when you first put those tables on the slide, it's like, ooh, that's a lot to process. So I attempted to use yellow highlighting and some circling that. So I attempted to use yellow highlighting and some circling to draw attention to certain things. Yellow, the numbers that are highlighted in yellow represent the highest percentage of respondents for that category. If it was within five percentage points, then I would also highlight the next highest percentage. And so, for example, parents and guardians, and you have to forget, have the right distance to see those numbers up there. I can see them here though. For parents and guardians, there was, you know, forty-eight percent were in favor of having weapons detection at both sporting events and at arrival. Our students were really fairly split, fairly well split between not at all and at sporting events only, with a third and a third roughly. And then you had twenty-six percent that felt that they would want to see weapons detection at both sporting events and at arrival. Staff members were fairly, I mean, almost evenly split at thirty-eight and thirty-nine percent between not at all and both at sporting events and at arrival. And then that, that also applied to that category of, of parents and guardians who are also staff members, the combined category. So you see the division there. When it comes to race and these responses, the majority of white respondents said not at all for weapons detection. But in almost all the other categories, the majority of respondents were interested in weapons detection for both sporting events and at arrival. One exception to that, well, you can see the numbers on the, on the right side, on the left side of the chart. So I know sometimes percentages can be misleading. So I wanted you to see the actual number of respondents that made up each category. So again, you can see the divide there. I also, we went through the comments a lot to try to make sure we pulled out all the major themes. And because that was another option, if people wanted to provide, you know, additional information about why they answered the questions the way they did. And these are some of the major themes regarding weapons detection. There were doubts about the effectiveness of metal detectors for addressing safety concerns. There are concerns about increased gun violence in the surrounding area and folks who believe that that merits consideration of bringing this technology to bear in our schools. Potentially, you know, more so high school and middle school, obviously. Alternative safety measures, there were folks who wanted to, you know, make sure we're considering alternative measures to address underlying issues contributing to violence. And then cultural and environmental concerns, and this came up in our previous discussions. Concerns that metal detectors may create a culture of distrust and fear, and that it could lead to a prison-like atmosphere within the schools. So those are the major themes that were recurring, most recurring in the comments. So, moving on to the question about youth resource officers, and should we further explore the role of youth resource officers as part of our current safety model? Quick reminder, five means yes, we'd like to know more. We'd like to look at resource officers. And one means no, not interested in this model. And so what you can see here is that sixty percent of respondents lean towards wanting to know more about the role of resource officers for the safety model. And twenty-five percent say not, lean towards not being interested. And then the undecided group, I call the threes, the undecideds in this case, they are about fourteen percent of respondents, fifteen percent actually, because it's fourteen point nine. So in this case, it, the data is definitely skewed towards, you know, reconsidering the role of resource officers in our safety model. On this chart, again, I took the data and broke it down by how did the responses come in by role? And how did the responses come in by race? And by role, what I want to point out is that the groups that are circled, which are parents and guardians, students, staff members, staff members who are also parents or guardians, in every one of those categories, it was predominant responses that favor reevaluating how officers are involved in our safety model. The areas where it was, the answers were no, were not interested in evaluating the role, reevaluating the role of officers in our model, those were more community members and people who identified as former students. And then when it comes to race and this question, you can see that there was a, you know, pretty strong leaning towards yes, reexamine the role of officers in the safety model. Even with the black or African-American group, the, there are two responses highlighted because the twenty-nine percent and the twenty-four percent are within five percentage points of each other. And the twenty-four percent was kind of in the middle undecided. So, and that data is fairly consistent with what we saw back when the original committee did its work back in 2020. If you look back at the work of that committee, you would see the same types of things in that data. So, what were the themes that came out around this question? From supporters, there was support for students. There was reasons to reexamine the role of resource officers in our safety model, is that they can be a support for students when they do become involved in the legal system. And that's in addition to providing daily safety support. There was an emphasis in the need and the benefits for the specialized training that resource officers receive in order to effectively engage with students, both in school and in the community. There were mixed feelings about armed officers. Some see value in having armed officers for daily safety, but others prefer that if we had officers here, that they don't carry guns or wear the full, you know, police patrol uniform. There were a lot of comments about positive experiences with resource officers from the past and highlighting their role as going way beyond just preventing fights. There was, along those same lines, there were comments about mentorship. And then just comments that people viewed them as a central, as a central part of the school safety model. From those who oppose reconsidering officer involvement in our safety model or different officer involvement in our safety model, there was concern about perpetuating the school-to-prison pipeline and exasperating discipline disparities. There were suggestions, again, look at alternative approaches. There was a distrust for police presence. There was questioning the necessity and cost-effectiveness of it. And then as some people felt they were essential, others think they're unnecessary or even detrimental. So, now moving into the third question, which was, should CHS students be allowed to use phones between classes and at lunch? Or should the phones truly be off and away all day? So in this case, one represents allowing students to use phones between classes and at lunch. And five, at the other end, is the, more of the off and away all-day policy. So you can see here that, kind of like with the resource officers, there's a clear skew in the data towards the allow students to use phones between classes and at lunch. With fifty-eight percent of respondents leaning that way, as opposed to thirty-two percent of respondents indicating that they favor a true off and away all-day approach. And about ten percent in the middle undecided on this, on this question. Looking at the responses by role and by race. By role, the parents are fairly well divided at twenty-eight percent and thirty percent on the different ends of the spectrum. Students are fairly well united at seventy-eight percent in favor of, you know, off and away in class, but between classes and lunch, let them, you know, choose how they handle their, their phone. Staff, like parents and guardians, also very divided at twenty-nine percent compared to twenty-seven percent on the opposite ends of the spectrum there. Our staff members, who are also parents and guardians, leaned into, often away during class at forty-five percent. So, those are the highlights there. And then respondents by race ethnicity, again, it sort of, it did lean one way where universally, there was a, you know, highest or on the high percentage end with having the policy aligned with what people generally observe as the current practice, which is enforcement during class, but not so much between classes and at lunch. And so that's how the data came out for the cellphone question. So, what were the major themes in the cellphone comments? Where people elaborated on their responses, they talked about, you know, recognizing the challenges posed by cellphones in classrooms. And, you know, concern for the distraction and the difficulty enforcing the policies. There were concerns about the impact of cellphone use on student relationships, mental health and learning across the board, you know, concerns for all those areas. There were suggestions for implementing stricter policies or designated phone-free zones to mitigate distractions. There were also suggestions for spaces where you should allow cellphone use to balance learning and student autonomy. Concerns about enforcing cellphone policies, especially regarding students abusing the rules and the potential confrontation with teachers, you know, having it be a power struggle that actually leads to, you know, damaging relationships between the adults and the students in the building. And there was recognition of the utility of cellphones for communication between students and parents, particularly during emergencies and managing, actually, mental health issues. Some, a lot of people commented about when their student is stressed or feeling anxious, they can, having the phone to be able to communicate with a parent or a friend can help soothe anxieties. And then there were concerns, again, about distraction and about cyberbullying. And I guess if there's a silver lining in this, it's while opinions on the cellphone policy vary widely, with some favoring stricter enforcement and others proposing greater leniency during specific times, there is widespread agreement that cellphones serve as both a potential distraction, but they're also very valuable for safety. And that is, I think, the crux of the issue. So, there was another question on the survey that was just, do you have any other comments or suggestions for us? And so I thought quickly we would review the major, the top ten themes that came out of, of those areas. One is just reinforcement for the importance of investment in mental health resources and mental health supports. Community engagement and decision-making, promotion of a positive school culture. And along with that, addressing negative school culture elements and bullying. Enforcement of discipline policies and consistency with that. Investment in safety measures is important. Community support and involvement is needed. Focus on teacher retention and teacher quality. Increase guidance, counseling, and support staff. And again, that structured support and accountability for everyone involved in the system. So, what were the major changes from the data that was posted before the big push on Monday to get more students involved with the survey? And what you saw this evening? So, as a result of the push, we did get a hundred and twenty-nine additional student survey participants. We received input from four, over four hundred and twenty students, which again, represented about thirty percent of all responses. And for the three different areas, as far as weapons detection is concerned, there, the, there was a decline from forty-four percent to thirty-nine percent as far as support for having weapons detection at both arrival and sporting events. The not at all category remained basically the same and the undecided category. But, well, the, the main thing that changed is support for weapons detection at sporting events only. That was really the shift, because where, because it's percentages, right? They're working against each other. Where you, you saw the percentage of supporting, those supporting both at arrival and sporting events decrease, we definitely saw support for having weapons detection at sporting events only increase. It almost doubled from eight to fifteen percent. So I thought that was interesting, that when we got more students involved, that was their lens on it or their preference. The percentage of respondents, how it worked out for the resource officers was that the percentage of those interested in revisiting the role of resource officers decreased from sixty-eight percent to sixty percent. But the, while at the same time, the percentage of those undecided in the middle increased from eight to fifteen percent. So we, again, we traded between interest in looking at the role of resource officers to undecided. That's basically where the trade-off occurred, because the ones and twos remained essentially the same at twenty-five percent. And then for the third area, the cellphones, there, definitely there was a shift in increase in support for allowing cellphone use between classes and at lunches. That increased from forty-seven percent to fifty-eight percent with that last push for student input. And the trade-off there was, was definitely more with the off and away for the whole day, because the middle stayed fairly consistent. It dipped slightly from twelve to ten percent as far as those who were undecided. So that was the impact of the push for more student responses. And again, just a reminder that all of this work that we do in safety, I view safety as definitely an area for continuous improvement and it's rooted in our strategic plan, because it's foundational for learning and for, really for everything. So it, it's all connected to priority two under the strategic plan. I know this is a long presentation compared to any of the others you have this evening. Is there any desire for me to pause for questions here or just continue into recommendations? Okay, we'll continue on. All right. So with recommendations, we also are providing supporting rationale. The recommendation around weapons detection is to proceed with the purchase of CHA Open Gate Detection System to be used primarily for athletic competitions. We would not be getting enough to handle arrivals. But two gates, which would handle football and basketball crowds, and those are our larger crowds, would cost approximately forty thousand dollars from the existing safety and security equipment budget, which to the point, like every time we make one of these choices, right? It, it takes something else that's in the long list of things to do and it pushes a little bit further down the list. Doesn't mean those things won't get done, because we're refilling this bucket annually. But it's, it's just a question of priorities. This is quick to implement compared to things like access control and camera systems, which take months. And they're things we typically try to crunch into the summer, because it's pretty evasive work with wiring and things like that. But the basis for this recommendation is that it's consistent with police recommendations to all the area high schools, back when they recommended we go to the clear bag policy. They also recommended starting to use this technology. At that time, we just moved forward with the clear bag policy. It's consistent with what our students and families already experienced at other sporting and entertainment events. It can be managed without significant changes or additions to our current event staffing schemes. It is responsive to concerns for prevalence of weapons in the community and the fact that attendees at our school events are not restricted to members of the school community. And as a side note, if there are, with two gates, we understand if there are multiple events being hosted at the gym and the auditorium, stadium, at the same night, there would have to be choices made about where, where the gates are deployed to. And generally, you'd want to deploy the gates where you have the largest crowd. And so that is the recommendation around weapons detection.
I think if it's the will of the board, I'd like to just check in if we want to make comments about this recommendation. Or do you prefer to hear all three and then comment on everything? Pardon me?
It's probably easier to do them one at a time.
I, I think so. Not to put anybody on the spot. Pardon me? Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments about this particular recommendation?
Yeah, I'll just ask one quick clarifying question. So this is only, the weapons detection would only be at CHS. So in terms of like Buford Sporting Events, we're not considering that right now.
That the, the investment would really, with two gates, wanting to keep traffic flowing, that's what would support CHS athletics. Now, if you had, if there were an off night at CHS and there was something big happening at Buford, these, these units are so transportable, they're so easy to move, that we could, if there was something big going on at Buford and nothing happening at CHS and Buford admin or the community said, hey, you know, why don't we set up the gates for this event? You could do that.
Would that be the same, I know Buford Football Team plays on the CHS football field. Would, would we use them for that?
We, we could. I mean, if the general idea is that whenever you have larger crowds coming together for events, that you want to do the screening, we certainly would have the flexibility to do that.
And if there are private groups such as soccer or youth little league football, are they able to use them or is that strictly going to?
I think that that would be up to them. If they were going to use it, I think we'd probably need to look at reevaluating the fee, the rental fee, because. Because, yeah, I, you know, at this time, I, I think we would, that would have to be a separate discussion if we want to give them the option to, to lease the equipment. And we also have to know that they actually know how to operate it properly.
Right.
But it's not rocket science, but still.
Thank you.
Kim, thank you very much for this. Is this recommendation based on, again, staff's understanding of what we think is the best solution? Or is it also considering the survey results?
It's considering the survey results from my perspective because. And I shared this, one of the pushes that we did is I met with the CHS staff on the PL day. They had an optional session where people could come and I would answer their questions and so forth. And I, I shared with the CHS staff that one of the things I was going to be looking for when we consider all this is what was the level of interest for the staff? For having weapons detection because without clear support from them to, to help man the gates for arrival. It would not be a good investment for arrival because you would, we would run the risk of buying six gates and not having the staff to run them. And you can't interfere with the schedule of the day and create a bottleneck situation with the students coming in. And seeing those divided numbers for the arrival, using it for, you know, en masse at arrival, really gives me calls for pause. Because I just, I, I agree with those who have concerns about, you know, is this, our money is precious. And I just, I would want to have a higher degree of confidence that we would have enough other people wanting to be part of that system. Before we would invest in that equipment. So to that extent, I feel like it's, it, that part of it was something that I considered as we discuss these recommendations.
Ms. Evey?
I guess if I have a question, it's, is, I know nothing's final. But is the survey the only measure that's going to be taken to get this input? Because from what I've seen and I know, like, we're all just kind of taking it in, this is just kind of off my first thought. But it doesn't seem representative, just from the demographics. I mean, it was 85% white, I believe. Oh, 69% white, I'm sorry. But, but still, I mean, I, I don't know, maybe I'm, again, I know it's, everything is still in the works and nothing is final. But I guess from the recommendation standpoint, like, is that being taken into account? I know that, I know there's only so much you can do with the survey and I know that there was a lot of push to get, you know, input. But it, it, it didn't for everyone. And so, I don't know, I mean, I could keep talking about it, but that's my question.
You know, I honestly, we always scratch our heads whether it's strategic plan or anything else we do about how to get more representation. From across all of our community with these processes. And I don't know that we've ever had one where we've looked at the results and said, yes, you know, we finally have that, that balance we're looking to get. I will say that when you look at the, the respondents divided by race. The majority of people who said not at all were white. Asian, Asian, or, you know, with the race reporting now, people can pick mult, however many categories they feel define them. And so I tried to capture anyone, any category that had five or more respondents. But, you know, most, i- if it's, yes, we did not get the diversity of responses as far as numbers. But for those who did respond, I thought this was interesting that a lot of people from different backgrounds all landed in that category of actually wanting it at both. Which, you know, surprised me.
Another question I have is, I guess, if, if the recommendation is just to proceed at athletic events. I, I mean, what's, if the clear bag policy is still in effect, I guess, what is the dramatic change that is, you know, saying we need the weapons detectors at these events?
So, speaking plainly, most of the time when we deal with different situations, the concern is about weapons in the waistband. And clear bag doesn't solve that.
Okay, yeah, no, I, I, I don't know, I'm, I know we'll have more, there's more room for discussion. But I, I guess, I don't know, I, I. From what I gathered, the, I understand that like, using it kind of the first step could be athletic events or whatever. I just am not sure what, how, how that information, how, you know, it got from point A to point B. Just because from the survey, I think it was largely the two opposites, right? If it was, you know, all the time or not at all. And I, I guess is, is athletic events just like the first step? I mean, why is that, I guess, why is that the recommendation?
Yeah, that's a good way to, I, I think I get it what you're asking. I, I do think if you take the pie chart and you look at those who said at sporting events only. And then those who were like both at sporting events and at arrival, it is sort of a compromised position. I was just, I'm. My answer about how, what, what was most compelling to me about the data and what I was looking for, given this split, right? You've got about almost 40%, 39% who say we're interested in having it both at arrival and at sporting events. It, it is sort of taking that middle of, middle of the road approach. But again, I have just real concerns about staffing to even attempt the other. And I, so, and also just leaning into our, our families. If they have the opportunity to go to sporting events or any large events and venues, this is something that you run into. It's something you encounter and so just having people, it's something that they would be used to, I guess. So it would hopefully be less disturbing. But, yeah, I'm not sure if I'm answering your question, Maggie. That's, those are all the thoughts that were behind, there are a lot of different thoughts that went into it. But there's enough interest here where do we feel like we can turn our back on and not make any move? That's, that's certainly the will of the board on that.
I do, that is, raises my question as a process question. So this recommendation, is it the board's? Like, is this a board vote? Or is this, you're telling us what you plan to do?
Technically, I mean, technically, the board does not have to vote on it unless you all are saying collectively that you want to have final say on what happens here. I mean, I think that as a staff, we can, I mean, this is something that does not require funds beyond. Anything that's budgeted in the security, in the security line item. So it is most certainly something that can be implemented at the staff level unless collectively at the board. You said, you all say you want to weigh in whether it happens or not, in which that does happen in some localities.
And then another question, and maybe Dr. Johnson, I might ask you to weigh in on this. How has the change in arrival procedures played out at the high school? I was thinking more just like directing our students all entering through one entrance now. And to date, have we had instances of weapons being found on persons at school or at extracurricular events?
So, and I shared this publicly at the parent forum after the reset. There are two incidents since I've been here where we recovered what I'll call real guns, not pellet guns. And one was at LMA and one was at CHS. These were not recent, these were pre-pandemic. We did have a situation recently where a student thought they saw a gun in the waistband of an attendee's pants. Did, it was towards the end of the game, reported it to staff. Staff moved quickly, but the person had already left the building. Staff did some really good camera work to kind of figure out who it was. And so, and CPD kind of reached out to the person to say, hey, you know, if you did this, this is not allowed. Because it was thought that there was a good chance that, that what the person saw was correct. I kind of, my gut feel on that whole situation was it reminded me sort of like, one time I went to fly and I forgot my, I'd been carrying around a tiny pocket knife of my husband's. That I forgot was in my purse and I lost it to TSA, which I know he's still very upset about. But I almost think for some people, it's like, they're just not even thinking. So CHS admin did a really nice job. We posted signs to remind people that it is not a place to carry your weapon, even if you're a company used to doing that elsewhere. That happened recently.
Excuse my ignorance of this, but at football games, basketball games at CHS, there's usually a CPD presence.
We do pay to have o- off-duty officers support our major, big athletic events where we have big crowds, correct?
And so if there were these there that, I guess my assumption would be the operational kind of protocol would be, they would be supporting at some of that point in addition to patrolling.
Right. Our plan would be to have our normal staff, our CSAs and other admin folks who are, who work arrivals at our games anyway, work these gates. But if there were an issue, yes, CPD would be there. And that's those type of events, the level of events with that level of community involvement where we have officers are typically the ones, are the same types of events where you would potentially want to have the gates.
So I know at several events that I've attended, it's been like five and six officers. So with the gates, will that change?
No, we would still have CPD presence at, at the games. I, I'm not, we wouldn't have any more, we wouldn't have any less. I think the, the plan is Andy Jones would continue to put in for the same level of support we've been having. It's part of our athletic operations. Question.
Anybody else? My question was, I wanted to circle back to our punch list of other safety, things that have been in the works. And, and I personally would like to, I mean, did you mention that, that this acquisition, this $40,000 would then? Push some other things or delay some other things? And I'd like to know what those things are before I would weigh in.
Well, the list is long. There's, you know, we still are building out access control for a number of our elementary schools, don't have it yet. Buford is, Buford already has it, but it'll be re-adressed with the new construction. Cameras for elementary schools are just starting to get momentum. We have some at Clark, but they're older and Greenbrier is getting them now. We have a master rekey project that's ongoing that we're not, not a third of the way through. But that's a, that's a very large project that we bite off one at a time. And a lot of these things, again, we're limited to what we can compress in the summer because it's too intrusive to do it during the school year. You know, there's, we have put protective film on glass at places, at certain places. But we have other places where we would, you know, want to do more of the protective film on glass. You know, those are the biggies, access control, the camera system, the master rekey. And again, to the extent we want to continue putting the film on glass, those are, those are all things that are. Again, the list is long and it's constant. We're making progress every, every year, every month, but it is quite a list.
But if you're saying 40,000 for these two units, then what, what specifically is that going to bump off or bump down the, the list?
It's really comparing in some ways apples and oranges and because for this reason, like right now, we're already, we've got the PO out for the. For the additional enhancements here. This, you want to know what really bumped, our, our integrator is Mid-Atlantic and they can only do so much with us. And so they're finishing up at Greenbrier right now. And then we are directing them here next to do those upgrades to all the perimeter doors that we've been talking about. That's the thing that's really going to delay other things. Because the $40,000, again, we have a process where we're, you know, it's budgeted, we're, we're refilling that bucket for safety money. And I apply for the state security grant every year. But our integrator that does access control and camera work, they're really the long pole in the tent really is to how, when they, we've already got them booked up through the summer. And by the time they're available to work on those other projects, well, we would have more money to keep going. So, it's, it's, these are sort of like, I don't want to say getting something on Amazon, it's not quite that simple. But these are out of the box, they don't require special wiring, they can work wire entirely, wirelessly. I mean, there's some work involved to get them set up and going. But these other things are major projects that take time and coordination. And we've already got our dance card pretty much fully loaded through the summer. And so I, I'm not trying to be evasive, but.
No, I just, I guess I want to make sure that, that if the decision is to allocate that 40,000 to these units. That it is not delaying the doors here, that we prioritize Charlotte's High School doors and the safety here.
That's right.
So I don't want to ever hear or know. But I, I mean, I do want to know for sure that this is not going to impact that.
No, no, that is, we are pushing Mid-Atlantic to get here as soon as possible to work on the next wave of door projects here. Okay, and it, as I believe Mr. Kugler shared this, or I did it, I can't remember who. But I believe we've shared publicly, well, I know we told the staff, CHS staff, we're asking that same question when Todd and I met with them. And it, we said, look, you, you might see them start to work here this spring, but it won't all be done until you come back next year. Because it'll, that work will continue into the summer and the CHS staff is aware of that.
And can you re-explain just for people that are listening and for the board, when you say door projects?
Okay, so the door project here at CHS involves adding access readers on the inside of doors. And audible alarms so that if someone props a door or goes out of a door without a credential, a FOB. It will actually trigger an audible alarm and that will help us deal with door props. And also just with the challenges of managing this very large building and the fact that students can come and go through all these side doors without. The, the, we can't monitor them all, all the time. This gives us a way, a better way of knowing what's going on with those doors. So it's a combination of adding the interior readers and the audible alarms.
How many CSA positions do we have vacant right now?
Yeah, that's right, zero right now.
Zero? But there was a desire for more, correct?
We did have, we just had a resignation at Buford, but thank you, Ms. Lewis, for my, I just learned about that this afternoon.
Okay. So are we ready to, to move forward to the next topic? And then we can come back and decide if we want to weigh in?
Question, if, if we move forward with this, when would we implement your, these?
So I believe these can be delivered within the school year. And so we could pilot them at some spring sports, like a soccer game or something like that, start to get staff used to using them. I believe we could get them in and get folks trained on how to use them to try them out at some soccer games. You wouldn't need necessarily two gates for most of our spring sports, but we could certainly give it a try and have, so that people would be ready. And know what to expect for football season, which would be the first major sporting event where we would want to have gates. It's also our understanding that we're hearing from colleagues that Albemarle is planning to move forward, starting at AHS with the same thing.
And then I would just add, I hope that there's a robust community education plan. That, you know, we don't have folks coming, having to turn around, go back to cars. Like we said, like, it's just second nature habit, not intentional, but just.
Right.
A strong community plan that folks know that this is happening and what to expect when they come to our games now.
Absolutely. I thought Beth Chuck did such a great job when she came up with those signs that said, clearly we care about your safety for the clear bag policy. So I don't know if she can top that, but yes, messaging would be very important.
Sharon, it's not a question, but I mean, I'm personally not for these in any of these situations that we're invited. So I would like the board to take a, a vote because I'm not clear either where all my other colleagues here. And it, we've talked about it twice, at least now from staff reports. And I feel like if we're going to be hearing like, again, twice in a meeting and taking so much time to review such a, such a dis. Information and potential decision, we should be taking action on it and providing that guidance one way or the other.
I think if we are going to take just action on this.
Or just a voice, like a preference?
Well, I'd like it to be at our next meeting, our March 20, whatever, meeting. We don't need the full presentation again, but I think like, my colleagues have said, still kind of processing and taking things in. I'm not prepared to vote right now.
Okay, I appreciate that. As the person who would be overseeing implementation of this along with Mr. Kugler, I like to know where you all stand. I agree, I feel like the conversation has been, even though you don't have to act. I mean, this is going to be a change in how we interact with the community and you all represent the community, so. I mean, this is going to be a change in how we interact with the community and you all represent the community. So, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the next. To the youth resource officer.
So, um, regarding the question of, uh, learning more, reevaluating the role of resource officers in our safety model. Recommendation, one, it's two-part recommendation here. One is that we do proceed with learning more about the youth resource officer model in, in Cambridge. We've learned a lot through our own experiences, both. But, you know, pre-pandemic and then when we moved to the new model, but I think there's always opportunity to learn more. And unfortunately Cambridge was not available to us when we went through that other process. So I feel like it was a box that was not checked and it would be interesting to see what they do that may be different. Um, the survey data is pretty clear around this question. It is, I mentioned this earlier, it's consistent with the same data we collected from all of our surveys and from our listening sessions. Back when the committee originally did the work to, um, look at what to do with safety next. And all of that information is still available, um, archived on the website. And I tried to give directions there for anyone who wants to access it. But then apart from whatever we find with the Cambridge model, and I will say this, what, what's different now is, um. Chief Kochas has had success connecting with his peer and Cambridge. So where we were, Beth Chuck in particular, and myself and others, we were all trying to, we were reaching out. Through numerous ways and just no response. And everyone was dealing with COVID. They were turning over their superintendent. We'd had no success making a connection. He has had success making a connection. So I, we have an entry point to the conversation now that we did not have before. I felt like I should share that. Um, but regardless of what we find in Cambridge, um. I, I do believe it is my strong recommendation that we reevaluate the role of officers in our school safety model moving forward. Um, in order to address the inefficiencies that make it more difficult for administration to meet our legal requirements, um, while they're trying to manage every other aspect of running a school. I think we need to prioritize system thinking above the feelings or perspectives of any particular group or individuals when it comes to safety. Um, we need to identify the, and restore the elements of the prior SRO model that were really beneficial for our students and families. And again, I strongly encourage you to look at the work of the committee from before. Um, but at the same time, there was, there was room for improvement. There was need for improvement. And so we need to take the lessons we've learned from the past and the present. To make sure we do everything we can to avoid, um, potential pitfalls. And I really need everyone to understand that those of us who work with school safety every day, removing officers from our schools did not remove the police from our safety model. We work with them as closely, more closely than ever. Um, we've just managed to make it really inefficient. Um, additional burden on administration, um, response times are longer. And, um, we did remove a resource from the building that some students and families found to be helpful when it was in the building.
Okay. Any comments on this? Ms. Heefe, do you have any comments? No. Mr. Meyer?
Uh, no, thank you for this, uh, recommendation rationale. I. Think this is, I mean, there's not any specifics here of what we're trying to do necessarily yet, but I think the rationale and what you laid out makes sense to, you know, going to continue to. Those discussions. I don't know if we need to exactly be. Uh, fixated on the Cambridge model, but rather I think working with our local police department here to best figure out what works best for our students. Uh, not only from a safety perspective, but also again, their mental health and everything else that's going on. So, thanks.
Miss Burn. Mm-hmm. Mr. Morse? No, Ms. Cooper? Ms. Dooley?
No, I agree with what Mr. Meyer said. Um, like to that end, I don't know, like, does this need action? I like, there's not really a decision necessarily. Like I would be interested in taking action once we have more information on what this optimal model looks like. I mean, I want to trust the people who are in the building who are saying what we're doing right now is not sustainable. It's not efficient. So that's my two cents.
Ms. Richardson?
Um, I will say that I'm interested in hearing about the, the training and reviewing the policy related to the searches. Like I'm curious to understand the process for that.
Absolutely.
I'm looking at you, Ms. Burns.
Yeah, I think I'll agree with Mr. Meyer and Ms. Dooley. Um, and as I have said before. My oldest son would not be a successful adult. He is. Had SRO Darius Nash not done the work with him that he did. And this is very important to me. I appreciate the good work that our current police chief is doing in the community and the interaction that he is having with our community. And that his officers are having in the community. And so I think I'm interested in learning. What that looks like for our community and the issues that our students are facing in the community that they live in and that our families live and work in. And so while the Cambridge model may be a great model, we don't know, um, just how do we take bits and parts of that and apply it to the scenario here in Charlottesville?
Nothing. I think. Well, a question. So what is, um, what are the legal requirements that you? Reference that we're unable to meet?
So there's, we're, we're meeting them. It just takes a lot of different phone calls and coordination where before the people are just right in the building and it's taken care of. So mainly around threat assessments. And mandatory reporting. Um, the pieces around coordination and crisis management planning, we, you schedule meetings for that type of work anyway. So I won't count, I can't count that part. But mainly threat assessments, which we have a high volume of, and then the mandatory reporting determinations and, and following through on that.
Okay. Um, and then could you speak a little bit more to the bullet point that says. Um, prioritizing system thinking above, above the feelings or perspectives of any particular group or individuals?
So before, when we went through the process that arrived at the current model. We, there was through, through December, all the data from the surveys and the, um. The listening sessions is what we called them. It all looked very much like what you have here, which you see tonight. And. It was, it was, it was a minority of voices, but it wasn't necessarily black and brown voices that were the loudest. And. So we did end up with a model that definitely represented the minority, but I'm not entirely sure what minority we were representing. And I feel like with safety. How, and so I'm talking about feelings here and I'm saying we shouldn't, but I, I struggle as a professional, how we say that. Any one group's thoughts about safety are more important than others. I think it's, it needs to be a systemic approach that serves everybody. Avoids, avoids the pitfalls that are very real, um, and potent, and potential pitfalls. I'm grateful for all the lessons we've learned. But I think if there's any place where we need systemic thinking and not feeling or fear-based thinking, it's safety.
I was, I, I hear and I receive and respect what you're saying. Um, I, I do feel like it's hard. And, and if we pivot back to just looking at the demographics of the, of the surveys and the voices that, that show up and respond to surveys, I mean, I think that's an example, right? And I think what you're getting at is, is potentially, but correct me if I'm wrong, that, that, that the makeup potentially of the safety committee. A few years ago. We, we based decisions on, on that group. Is that what you're saying? And then potentially that they're making decisions or they're making statements?
No, um, this, so the safety committee, uh, work, like I said, all of the. The data was pointing towards optimizing a model that still include, would include officers. But then. If you look at all the presentations from that work, um, between December and then January, when we had our public forum. You know, a message was received that the job of the committee is not to come up with the optimal safety model. The job of the committee is to come up with. An optimal safety model that does not include officers. And so at that point we pivoted and the process was steered intentionally to a model that did not include officers. Because I was instructed that was the will of the board.
Okay. I don't know if I recall that or not. I think I came in at the tail end of that and it doesn't matter, but I would encourage, with all due respect. My fellow board members to really dig into, to the committee's work and the archives. I mean, and I haven't read it all. But I think it's, it's our, our duty to do that as we continue to. And.
I see the link.
Yeah, everything is still available and, and the, um, the data, but I guess when, there were, there were voices of minorities on the committee. And those weren't the voices saying remove officers. There were some very loud voices saying to remove the officers and they were not from. People that you would deem to be marginalized or minority or anything like that. So that's all I'm saying.
But if the directive was to move away from SROs, then you didn't have another option, right? Like if that's what you were told.
That's where, as we were approaching the final parts of the process, that was the directive that was given.
Thank you.
And again, I guess my last point, and I'm sorry, I wasn't very clear in what I was trying to ask was that if. I mean, this is such a, a big decision in a lot of ways. I feel like if we're gonna pivot to something different again. But I do want to make sure that we are, we are hearing from everybody. And I don't know how we do that. I mean, we've said this time and time and time again. But more than ever, I mean, I think, I think there's voices that we don't, we don't hear from. And I don't know, maybe we need to hit the streets, board members. We've talked about that for other.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, um, now we talk about hitting the streets and having those talks with.
I mean, maybe this is it, maybe this is.
The time we walk those streets with the chief when he does his community meetings and have conversations with people. Where they're at to hear from the people.
Or we go into community centers and neighbors, neighborhoods and do this ourselves. Anyway, we can talk about this more later, but thank you. I don't know if there's any other questions, comments on this, Mr. Meyer?
Just chair process forward on this, uh, not again, looking for action, but I wonder if any of my fellow board, board members, and I'm not suggesting myself either, would want to. Work more directly in this in some function to help lead it and move it forward, or is that not necessarily?
Well, I think we can talk about it. And I think Dr. Gurley has, and I don't know where you're at on, on going up and, and looking at a little bit more, taking. Were you still thinking of that being part of this process as far as the Cambridge?
It most certainly can be a part of this process. I mean, it can begin as a Zoom meeting. I know, um, you know, hearing community members say that they want us to be good stewards of the public's money. I mean, this can begin as a, as a Zoom meeting and we can learn more. We can hit the streets with the, the chief who is making great strides. Um, there are a lot of ways to approach this. Um, I think that what you continue to see from us is that. We're going to continue to do more. And that's why we, you know, to Ms., um, Hapey, um, to her, uh, point about, you know, including more voices. It's not because we're not trying. Um, I think what we are seeing is sometimes people are saying, you're not listening to my voice. Um, you know, I, um, thought about what Mr. Moore said a long time after the last board meeting. And he said, I have a great relationship with police officers. But we still hear voices of people who don't look like us saying differently, what's best for black and brown people. So if there are, you know, black and brown people who feel strongly that we shouldn't be pursuing this, then. I do want to hear that because I think you all want to take that into consideration as board members, but. Our voices are not the voices that tend to be amplified here in Charlottesville and we have to do better.
Do we have ways to incentivize people to get those voices? Because I've talked about this the last, uh, board meeting when this was a discussion, we have to start thinking outside of the box and yet we're still doing the same old thing. So until we start thinking outside of the box of how we get to those voices, we're gonna get the same result.
Maybe we can, can work with, um. The people who are, you know, leading in the neighborhood. I don't know the names of the positions. I know some of the, who the people are, but like at the City of Promise and. Let's know Kendall Wood and like have meetings in the community. Um.
And I will, I will tell you too, Ms. Cooper, I was thinking about a moment, was this, this is a moment that Dr. Johnson and I shared. Uh, I think, I feel like there was a board member there or maybe there's another principal. We. Um, I think Ms. Hapey was there, um, when we did the group with the students, uh, we did the, about the security. And within her student group, um, so we did this focus group with students and they were very at different ends. They were very strong with each other. I think part of the problem is people don't believe qualitative data. Like they, we see the numbers and we told you this is how people feel. We're, we have these engagement moments with students and they're telling us how they feel, but when we report back that thi- this is what people said. I think that qualitative approach is not, I mean, people, it doesn't come across as strong or, you know, I think sometimes maybe if, if. The room was filled with, you know, um, marginalized voices or black and brown folks, or you know, people who are economically disadvantaged. Uh, I think if we were lined up, then like, okay, yes, um, this is how people feel, but we're trying, we're meeting people. But I think when we meet people where they are, I think people are not believing that qualitative data, that that's what happened at that meeting, that people. Felt strongly this way or strongly against, um, that way. And so I think that that becomes a harder argument. Come to the microphone, Dr. Johnson. But yes, there are better ways. We can, we can reach more people in more innovative ways.
I just wanted to note that it's not uncommon for us to do groundwork and community engagement. We did a lot of that when we were initially doing our equity work and continue to do so, so we can set up any meetings that you would like. I think in this conversation, all of them, we have to figure out what voices we want to center. And so like all concerns and issues, there will be different, differing opinions on them. And so it about, it will be about who, um, we as a CCS, um, administration, school board will choose to elevate and center in that conversation. And so I think you'll have diverse opinions, but it'll come down to the voices you want to center at that time. I would also like for the school board to do some of that work.
And I also share that, by the, even if a decision were made today, which it will not be. To move forward with, you know, having some officer presence, an officer in a school or whatever. It would take quite a bit of time to actually implement that because you have to reevaluate an MOU that addresses everything from how the personnel is selected to the, how they're managed. Reevaluating all the policies, including search, making sure that there is not involvement with discipline, what can be done to minimize any culture of surveillance, all that kind of stuff. There's a lot to be worked out and a lot has evolved. At the time that the committee did its work before, Arlington had recently adopted what was broadly considered to be like a best practice, uh, new MOU for, for officers. Now, um, Arlington or is Arlington or Alexandria, I get my A's confused, but one of the two big A's in Northern Virginia. Anyway, they also were like other divisions who removed officers after May of twenty twenty, but then they did end up reinstating them as did Albemarle on a, on a lesser basis. And I think that's something else. That needs to be considered is what number is the right number, if any number, because of, again, the operational things with efficiencies and so forth. And services that families and students may or may not want more readily available to them. All right. Um, but it would take time, months, many, you know, I'd say at least six months and that would be. Probably a little on the optimistic side. It's a, it's a process. Okay. So cell phones. The recommendation and rationale around cell phones is to maintain the current practice of off and away during class. Rationale for this is that it aligns policy with the predominance of what's actually happening currently in the building. It reinforce, it refines our practice to ensure consistent enforcement. That was a theme in a lot of the comments is whatever you're gonna, whatever you say you're gonna do, just do what you say you're gonna do, you know, with. With young adults, with children, you know, as a parent, you understand the importance of doing what you say you're gonna do and consistency. And that came through in the comments. Admin need to continue to support, admin will continue to support teachers and students in managing the expectations. Um, it supports student agency to regulate in cla- in-class and out-of-class expectations. And, um, we would need to also provide additional supports for staff who are struggling with students not responding to tier two and tier three interventions. So that would all be part of, of maintaining what is the off and away during class, um, practice, if you will, and, and formalizing that under policy. Along with that. There's a recommendation to create a standing working group of diverse students, staff and administration to focus on school climate and culture. Uh, we need to monitor school climate. Uh, we need to monitor school climate using existing data and other sources. We need to include in that specific initiatives around the impacts of cell phones and screen time and extend this education and outreach to our middle and elementary schools. There were some suggestions in the surveys. You know how sometimes you'll see older students go visit the younger schools and talk about, you know, don't do drugs and those kinds of messages, um, educating a cohort of our CHS students to be. Leaders in this area and they can also hopefully influence their younger peers. And then spearhead activities to continuously improve climate and culture, helping everyone to have a sense of belonging. Um, some of this work, I believe, is already underway at CHS uh, with the, they've been trying to form a group to focus on climate and culture, but this is just. You know, trying to dovetail in with that.
All right. Go ahead, let's start.
Chair, process wise, again, question, uh, this would be a policy change, so it does require a vote, correct?
We gotta come up with the policy first.
Sorry?
We would have to decide what that policy needed to look like first.
Correct, because we have a policy already that's in place.
It's it's in the code of conduct, but yes, it's embedded within that. Or the student rights and responsibilities, I guess is what we call it. Questions, questions, comments down there, Ms. Hevy?
I have a, oh my goodness. Flu season. I have a, no, 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 my bad, my bad, my bad. I got my shot, don't worry.
I have another mask, would you like one?
I guess my question is, I think I know the answer, but um, I think I've brought this up before. There has been so much um, information thrown at us throughout this year regarding cell phones. Um, and I think the biggest one that keeps coming up is. Were those pouches ever ordered? Because there have been, I mean, I remember so many people telling us that they were coming by, you know. October, by September, but I assume they were never ordered and. I mean, is that information correct? And if not, why was that put out in the community? Not that, you know. This group of people had any doing with that, but I, are you guys familiar with that and?
I'm gonna need to defer to some of my colleagues on the status of that piece because I didn't work with the vendor.
And so I think some of it is um, just the miscommunication um, in terms of. Um, there was a lot of conversation with regards to um, the cell phones. The initial conversation, well, the initial thing that happened was the revision of the policy to say. Um, to say off and away for the entire day and that was from the beginning of the day to the end of the day. Um, and then there were uh, continuous, there were engagements and conversations about. Um, we would explore what um, it would look like to implement pouches. And I think just in the telephone game, no pun intended, but in the telephone game of changing information. Um, that part of what was told is that we we would be implementing pouches on a certain day. And our communication was that we were exploring it and and in the meantime, what was happening. Is that um, you know, we were getting feedback from you, from your um, peers, from our teachers in terms of. What was working, what was not working. Um, and you, I think your voices were very amplified in this particular instance where you all were saying. We're responding to our teachers and it's much better in the classroom, but we can. Um, you all were saying as a student body that we can um, now regulate. What happens in the classroom versus in the hallway. Um, and then teachers were saying, we're seeing some improvement. It's not where we want it right now, but we're seeing some improvement in the class, but it's not realistic to manage. The stu- the cellphone um, policy expectation in the hallway because it feels like we're now having to chase students down. And so I think that was a lot of what the survey was getting at is that. We were hearing from you all saying, just let's let this happen in the classroom off and away. And then are there other spaces where we can have ours, um, where we can have our cell phone? And so here we are. So to Mr. Meyer, uh, to Mr. Meyer's point. Um, this would require us to, as a team. Uh, draft a policy based on, um, based on this and put whatever guardrails in place. And then bring it back for board approval. Um, if we are going to respond to both the survey data. And respond to the qualitative input that we've gotten from stakeholders.
I guess I do have a quick question. When we're talking about. Talking about implementation, so the Earl's is probably next school year. Is that what we're thinking about?
You mean with like yonder pouches?
Oh, I'm not even talking about yonder, um, just the off and away, but just during class.
Well, the off and away during classes is become more of a norm now, so um. I don't think that would require a delay. I think it's just being really clear about it. I think part of the problem is there's been this. This disconnect between what was just determined for policy and then sort of what the practice is that you see most, most often going on in the school. So um, resolving that disconnect could be done in the course of this year. Um, off and away for the day. Moving to that again, would it take something like the yonder pouches to pull it off and and that would be a longer timeline, I would think.
But the, I think your, you, your recommendation is to follow the, the, the survey results.
Right.
Which would uh, require us to, if we were going to follow that, uh, follow the recommendation and then allow the cell phones in the hallway and the, in the cafeteria. Then we would just make a policy change and we could present that.
Right.
When we do all of our spring policies.
I'm sorry, I must have, I may have misunderstood the question, but yeah, um.
Nope, you're spot on. Thank you.
Ms. Cooper? Ms. Dooley? I think I know what you would say, but. Ms. Richardson?
Um, yes, I wanted to know if you had any examples of the activities that you guys are spearheading.
I think I need Dr. Johnson to speak to that, um, because she, there's been one BKT time that was. I think a big success. I don't know what else is being planned, but um, really the, and then Maggie spoke to some things, but I think those are mostly senior focused.
So you were talking about climate?
I think when we talk about school culture, is that what you're thinking?
Climate and culture activities.
Yes, yeah. If we're saying we're doing that.
Thank you for asking. Uh, yeah, we have a lot of exciting things planned. We are working with the students to see what they would like to see happen. We also received a. What will be a ten thousand dollar donation to go towards our celebrations and so our hope is to have a monthly celebration similar to what we had. During the reset time, where we can have activities for students participate in. So we're already in the, in the planning phases for that. Uh, we have some pep rallies coming up. We have great senior activities coming up that we're, we're working through. And then we have some student body activities that we're going to do as well. Yeah.
So my question to you, Ms. Powell, is um. At at the high school level and maybe Ms. Hevy can weigh in on this as well. So what? How have we pushed out to students as far as the education about cellphone use and and the impacts that that using cell phones? Cause I mean, we had talked about within the committee. Doing, I believe, class, class meetings or cohort meetings, and I don't know that that ever happens specific to cellphone. Information and education.
And again, I apologize. So these recommendations are based mainly on the survey. Um, input and I haven't been involved with those pieces, so I would need to um.
Yeah, and I guess it's, and yeah, I mean, Dr. Odie or or Dr. Johnson, but I guess my concern is that we talked about doing a lot of that education and I'm not sure, and. My goodness, we've had a lot going on this year, but I think that those pieces are are crucial and critical and we haven't done our due diligence with those yet. Um, so wherever we land on this, I think it's still, it it's imperative that we, that we do do, you know, that. You had the opportunity to sit and listen and and receive some of that information with your cohort and your peers. And I don't think we've done that with the classes. So I think if we are going to sustain this, whatever iteration of this we land on. We have to, we have to do that with our students and I think. I think with the staff as well, and I know they've had bits and pieces of this, but again, there was a lot of great work done by committee members. Um, to really get us to where we are and and I think we owe it, we owe it to our students, to our kids. To put that out there and for that to be part of it and wherever we land, I'm asking and I'm hoping that we can make sure that that happens.
Ms. Torres, um, I, I do believe that the goal was to have this as a focus in cohort meetings, have a cohort meeting at the beginning of each quarter. And from what I understand from, from Dr. Johnson, there have been cohort meetings, there eve, is even one scheduled. But as you just mentioned, there's been a lot going on. And um, and also as Dr. Gurley mentioned, we, we sort of paused because we were listening to students, we were listening to staff. And so we paused on a lot of that to focus on some of the other. Uh, more prevalent things that were happening at the time. Uh, we were hearing from many teachers and students that the off and away. In the classrooms was working. And so we were able to divert our attention to other more important things and pressing things at the time. So we, there was absolutely great uh, and meaningful and important work that happened. In those meetings and we can continue to push forward with it. Um, but I believe, uh, just based on. Ms. Powell's presentation, she has presented information and data based on what the survey has brought is what the. The way people want to move.
Right. Okay, I mean. No disrespect to students. I mean, we kind of know what you guys want, right? Um, but again, the, the point, you know, is that they really haven't received that background education, I think, which, which might. And might not have swayed, you know, the data from the survey, but I think it's still important to put it out there. And I've, I'd want my, my child or my student to hear that. So, you know. Yeah, I, I'm not.
Right, because we still want to create the culture, the healthy culture of cellphone use, technology. Creating boundaries, being safe, all of the things we talked about. Have talked about at least seven and all the good work. That the committee did to talk about why we didn't want cell phones, right? Why we wanted them off and away, but to implement. Some of those strategies and. Learning coping mechanisms, all those other things. To be successful. Off and away in the classroom.
And I, I, I feel like there's been so much good work on on changing processes, implementing processes, trying to get some stabilization here. You know, in the high school and within the division, and I think that all needed to happen. So I don't feel like we've given, um, so with this more stable environment. To then come back to this instead of loosening it. Um, I think is really important to try that. I mean, I think, um. You know, if we were to look at, and and I remember hearing um, right after the reset, so many people coming in and saying, are we going to be able to sustain this? And so we're, I, I feel like we're sustaining stability here with processes. You know, coming in the front door, changing those types of things which are helping and so, so important. And again, I feel like we need to. Try and attain what what we had recommended as far as the off and away and and. We've got a new principal coming in and some new leadership and we've got. APs who are, you know, supportive of this and know and and maybe we can do better. You know, maybe we can continue to elevate it a little bit more. Maybe we can find phone zones, you know, um. I, I mean, I'm all for people and I get it that there are students who need to, for different reasons, communicate with their families. Um, you know, whether it's a language issue or emergency, I get that. Um, but, but I also feel like. Walking out of the classroom and the first thing you're doing is FaceTiming your friends, you know, in another part of the school is not healthy. And it's not what we need to be doing in school, but that's my opinion. Anyway, I'll, I'll, I'll back off now. But I appreciate everybody's work. I appreciate the data and the surveys, but I still think we, we can't, we can't let go of what we had hoped to do. My opinion. Thank you.
Chair, real quick, I mean, so are we? I don't think we're taking a vote on this, but I mean, I like that second bullet and and I think to your point that. I'd like really see that follow through it on and implement it if it hasn't been fully yet and or try it again before, so is that what's gonna happen?
Which second bullet? Okay.
The creative standing work group and then and then do all this other uh. Spearhead activities and again, focus on culture and educate the students. Yeah? Okay, and then we're not doing one, the first bullet? Right, okay.
Is that the? That's my will is to not do one. I want, I don't think we should be in the practice of. Passing a policy and then six months later, changing that policy. I think there was a reason and thought that went into the policy that we adopted and I very much appreciated. Your points, Lisa, just about. Stabilizing, riding the ship and then making an assessment. I don't want to just like throw spaghetti at the wall, you know, trying to see what fixes. Sorry, Maggie.
Okay, any other comments, Mr. Morse?
Yeah, I think it comes back to what we see on that slide of consistent student expectations. And so that was like my reason for asking, is this something that we're going to change next school year at the earliest?
Well, I think part of the work, so I'm just jumping in to say that we, I think, as a. As a school division, we've, we understand uh, where the gaps lie. Um, uh, Ms. Rastic, I'm looking at her because she and her team are doing the work with the domain teams. For MTSS, multi, multi-tiered systems of supports. Um, and so one of the things that we know is the biggest, one of the greatest areas of work right now is in the domain as it relates to culture and climate. Uh, particularly in this building. And when we talk about culture and climate, it's the tier one expectations, which address the consistent student expectations. Um, consistent expectations for staff members because if you can, you can get a group of teachers in this room and they will tell you that my colleague is not enforcing. The policy, um, or vice versa. Um, so we know, so I think where we leave this in this room is that. The work from the domain teams um, through the MTSS will address this component of it. Um, again, I think where we, where we're leaving this is. That we have a policy right now that says off and away, which expects teachers to chase down students in the hallways and they're saying, I can't do that. I can't do that. Um, so I just. I think we have to be mindful that we have a, a policy right now. Um, that most teachers would say it's not practical in application because I'm, I'm not chasing a student down the hallway to get their phone. But we can address all of that through our domain, um, through the domain work and creating and those expectations.
So am I hearing that we would. Not change policy, but focus on bullet number two as sort of working towards the vision. So it's sort of an aspirational policy that we leave in place, I guess, guiding, guiding star sorts, is that?
Right now. So what I have is that we are not touching the policy, um, the recommendation, um, sounds like we're not touching the policy. We're reinforcing expectations and so Dr. Johnson can work on what that looks like with the administrative team in the building. And then the, the domain team can look like, can work on what that looks like with regards to expectations. Students and teachers and parents.
Ms. Dooley, may I ask you a question? So in your thought process is not to touch the policy within six months or so? I mean, I'm just roughly, roughly. So if, if the, if a new policy were to come up when we're dealing with policy in this, what, May or June? Like, the, does it still fit within a oppo- appropriate time to discuss or would it, like in your opinion, wait another year?
I'm. I'm not sure I fully understand the question.
Yeah.
Um, I think my. I, I don't, I like the policy and yes, it may be an aspirational policy. Um, but I don't know that we can even quantify it as aspirational because we haven't had the framework in place to even see if it can be effective.
Understood.
And so the work. And so the work that everybody is doing in the building.
Mm-hmm.
I think can get us to a point where we can truly assess its efficacy or not, if it is aspirational or not. Um, and I think that second bullet point that we've given directive to focus on the school climate and culture gets at. Creating that framework where we can truly determine whether it functions or not.
Understood.
So could a policy come up for May?
Well, I'm not saying before May, but in, in May or in June, during that normal, yeah.
Um.
Cause I, and the rea, the reason why I ask that is I am not opposed to the recommendation.
Mm-hmm.
I just prefer to stay consistent in our expectations, if that makes sense.
Right.
I would agree. Um, I'm not opposed to the recommendation either, and I think I want to be mindful of the data that has been captured. Though somewhat split. Um, and if we were truly interested in student voice, we got it. And I just want to be mindful of that too. Um, they are students and. Perspective does matter. Um, but I don't know how this work gets done and enforced currently. Given current staffing, current climate in this school. Um, I think that's a heavy lift. Just being honest. Um, it's a lot that we're asking people to do every day. We have a lot of new CSA staff members and I'd like to see them build relationships with our students. And become trusted adults and have that positive relationship to then be able to enforce a policy like this. Um, just giving some time and space to people, to our students and to our new staff. Um, to be able to build those relationships and managing the expectation certainly in the classroom. Um, but just being really mindful and treading lightly on. The majority of that CSA staff is new and just being really mindful of the people who have to do that work of implementing the policy.
If I could, Ms. Powell, I know you've been standing for a really long time, so I, I apologize. Um, uh, I, I want to kind of echo what Ms. Byrne said. I think, um, you know, as a student. Um, I was appreciative that the survey went out and I was appreciative that, you know, we got the chance to express ourselves. Um, and I think the data was there and I, I think if, you know, um, that's what we're looking at. I mean, there was a strong. I guess, at least for student, student uh, voice of, you know, what our opinions are. And I understand we're kids. I understand that maybe some people were voting because they think that would be efficient for their learning. I understand others would probably just doing it because they want to look at Instagram and I get that. Um. I, I will say for someone who's in the building every day, I don't think the um, lack of enforcement of this policy is at all about effort. I think it's just about um, staffing. I think it's about, you know, what's actually possible, you know, I mean. The student to teacher ratio in the halls and at lunches is, I mean, there's no way to literally take the phone away from every single person at lunch. And I mean, that, that's just, I just don't think that's possible. And so, you know, I don't think it's, you know, a lack of effort in teachers or administration, just not caring. I think it's genuinely um, a difficult task for them to monitor all of this ef, effectively. And I think that needs to be accounted for. Um, and so, you know, I, I think this is always going to be, people are always going to feel differently about it. And it's always going to be a, a split vote, but I, again, it's, it's something people feel strongly about and um, I hope that, you know, everyone's voices continue to be amplified.
Sorry, I mean, I'm fine with looking at survey data, but we also have to look at the science data that shows that it impacts learning. Causes a lot of mental health stress, you know, and there's all the data that we know that the science is third party reviewed and everything else that is showing that these are detrimental. So, and that's what I'm basing my, gonna be basing my recommendation decisions on, which, you know, is also my, our goal or responsibility is for the health and education of our students. Implementation of that, I, I agree, probably needs to work on that, but I'm looking at the data, what do these do to our children? And, and their learning outcomes and their mental health. That's what I'm basing my, my decisions on.
And, and I understand that and I, um, there's, I don't think anyone's arguing that phones are, uh, you know, uh, a happy, perfect thing for everyone, you know, obviously there are side effects. But at the same time, I think that, um, you know, as someone who this policy affects, I think that my voice and the voices of my peers need to be really heard. Um, and listened to. And I'm not saying that that's, you know, there's a lack of that. I'm just saying that that is something that I really hope. Um, the board and the administration continues to listen to because at the end of the day, um, you guys work so hard every day. I know you do, but you know, these policies affect us. This is where, this, we're in this building every day. Um, we are the ones, I'm the one being told in the hallway to put my phone away, you know, it's like. We are the ones who have these restrictions. We've lived this for, I mean, I've lived it for four years, but really this past year. And I think that's something that needs to be accounted for and, you know, even things that the data fails, may fail to um, accurately represent, you know, it's, it's. I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to seem like I'm arguing that phones are great. I, I completely understand that, but I just think it's important to really. Um, it's a complicated issue and you need to, I think everyone needs to acknowledge that.
I think the time also, like understanding it's six minutes between classes. So that's forty some-ish minutes a day and twenty-seven minutes at lunch. I think have a little bit of perspective in that space too.
Just to be clear, we're talking about the high school only. We're not, there's no recommendation to change.
Right.
A policy at CMS.
No. Correct. I should have, um, included that in the slide. That, that was in the comments, um, a lot too, is that, hey, whatever's working at the middle school, leave it alone. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
So, uh, wrapping up, um.
I think we can bypass this slide because we've, we've.
Yeah.
We've, um, teetered from this. So I think we've established what the next steps are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Um, eleven point zero is board response to written reports. Um, and then we are now to comments from members of the community, our second opportunity. So if there's anybody here in the media center who would like to come up to the podium, please do so now. And I see nobody jumping up, so if there's anybody online, please raise your hand. Or use the raise hand icon and we can elevate you. And I don't see anybody there either. Um, so we are now to comments from the board. If anybody has anything else above and beyond or outside of what we've talked about that you would like to share. Um, now is the time to do so. We'll start down here with Ms. Richardson.
All right. Um, I want to say that I'm excited to hear that the seniors are gonna have a senior trip. Because when I graduated, we did not have one here. So that's really good to hear, especially since it's been such a rough year. I do want to take a moment to acknowledge Matthew Resnick and Talita Howard. They put together an amazing Black History Month celebration that I was a part of and I just wanted to say. That the teachers and the students were great and I really enjoyed being there and I hope to attend next year. So that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Cooper? Okay. Mr. Morse. Ms. Byrne? No? Ms. Hevy?
I mean, I guess I'll talk, you guys, if you're insisting. Um, like I said before, this is my last um, time turning on this mic that really, I'm really bad at using. So I'm, I'm really sorry. It, it's probably happy, um, that I'm done. But um, I've really enjoyed this experience and I'm really grateful, um, once again, to literally each and every one of you. Um, you know. I think this year with everything that's been going on, um, you guys have done a great job of working to amplify student voice. And that's something that I'm really appreciative personally and that I know I can, I can confidently say that, um, the rest of the student body is. Like I said last meeting, I think, um, for whoever's out there listening to me, ramble like for the fiftieth time. Um, I think that, um, we need to take advantage, um, uh, uh, members of the school community need to take advantage of opportunities like these. Um, to speak with the board and get your voice across because they, they do listen. I mean, I'm, I, I know that firsthand. I mean, I was given this seat. Um, and you know, I, I'm given this opportunity to speak my mind. And so I think, you know, parents, whoever's watching this, you know, tell your kid to come. Uh, you know, if they're coming home and complaining about things, tell them, you know, we, we can handle it. I mean, I think Dr. Gurley's heard a lot of complaining, but I think, I think he's got, I think he's got something, you know, a tough skin. So, um, so yeah, I mean, that's, I guess, my, um, what I, what I'd say is just, you know. Every voice matters. Um, and I think a great thing about the school community, one of the many things that I love about, uh, CCS is that, uh, that's recognized and, you know. Um, it, you know, they want to prioritize the voices that are representative of the community. And I think that's something that needs to be taken advantage of because no change is going to happen, um, without, you know, action. And so, um, yeah, thank you guys again for, um, all you've done. I really, really appreciate it and unfortunately for you, this will not be the last of me. I'll probably, I'll probably still come to these things and, and talk to you guys. So thank you.
Hmm. Thank you so much for, for being part of our board. Appreciate your voice. We really do. Yep. One more thing.
One more thing. Last thing I promise, you guys are very lucky. The next person in Kels is like one of my best friends and you guys are lucking out. So if like you guys are on a, don't worry, you're set, you're set.
So yeah, I do look forward to, to getting to know Kels a little bit more. I sure enjoyed watching her on the court. And the rest of the team and the boys too. So a big shout out as we've all done. And again, I don't know that we can ever shout out enough. Um, just how much they poured their hearts and souls um, into their seasons for Charlottesville city schools and for the community. So forever grateful for the, the number of games that I was able to attend. It was, it was wonderful. Um, I do want to just quickly, um, do a shout out for, um, again, it's kind of a special ed advisory committee, but it, it's. Um, something that, uh, the Parent Resource Center, um, hosts every year. And I've, I've managed to always have a conflict every single year. Um, but I, I think I can maybe attend a little bit of it. So it's called the, it's the twenty twenty-four Life After High School. And so this is a transit, transition conference and resource fair. And it's held at, um, PBCC. It's this Saturday from eight thirty to one. And it is an incredible event. Um, and there's all kinds of workshops. Um, let's see, it's for teens, families, all professionals are invited. Um, but it really focuses on, um. Supporting parents and students, um, and families who have students with disabilities. And how to help them transition af, after public school and, and all kinds of different workshops. There's free lunches. Um, and all kinds of things. So again, that's this Saturday, March sixteenth from eight thirty to one. It's a free event. So take, please take it then.
Yes, that's.
Oh, well, there you go. We got more time. Um, and I've lost a week somehow. So that's good. I've got more time to prepare for that. But anyway, I did want to, to highlight that because it's a really wonderful opportunity and, and every time, um, they have it. All I hear are wonderful things from people who, who have gone. So again, March sixteenth. And I think that's it for me and I will, um, turn the mic over to Dr. Gur.
I don't have much. Uh, you shouted out the teams and I just want to also throw in that our, um, exceptional students, um, our Metfor League team. Still making us proud. I think they still, are they done? I know last week was the game. Well. Well, they're always our champions because they really have shined this whole season. So we have been very proud of them. And, um, I just want to say to, um, Swaggy Maggie that I enjoy her. I get to see her probably more than the board members do, but. We, um, we love you. And I think just for everyone that's listening, everyone assemble that the doors of this, uh, central office are always open. If you have questions, suggestions, you need to vent, um, you just want to give some praise, um, you know. Yes, we are back on Dairy Road. That is an announcement. We, we are back at one five six two Dairy Road. Um, so if you do have some feedback to anything that's going on in Charlottesville city schools, um, we are here. Um, I'm here, um, and someone's able to just, um, just be a listening ear and implement where needed. Um, and that's it for me.
Thank you, sir. Um, and work session wrap up? I don't think. I think we let you off the hook tonight. All right. And upcoming meetings. So we do have spring break coming up. So and because of that, our April meeting is being pulled back a little bit and that will actually be March twenty-eighth. Um, here in the media center at five o'clock.
Chair, on that, do, do we want to push it to after or is there a reason why we're doing it earlier?
I think it, the schedule's already, the calendar of, of meetings has already been, um. Voted on and approved and that, that's just the way it fell. Otherwise it condenses the.
It's going to condense, it condenses one of the months. It either condenses March or it condenses April. We had a back-to-back meeting last year in April. So if we move it to April, you will have a back-to-back meeting in April. So one of the months we'll have two meetings that are like two weeks apart.
Okay. And are we expecting to, a budget amendment meeting anytime soon or no?
No, I think we have to wait till we hear what is passed at the state level. And then, go ahead. So just for the public's sake, the response to that question was April ninth, um, city council should finalize their budget. And then we hope to also hear something, um, from the state not too long afterward. So we should know something by May.
See, excuse my, I mean, do we save ourselves a potential emergency budget meeting and move our March meeting to the second week of April? When they will have the city budget and then, or no?
So when is our?
I mean.
I'll let the chairs figure it out.
Yeah, yeah. From my understanding, we're, we're still going to have one at the beginning of May. So it, I don't think there's going to be an emergency session. At, at least I don't see it as an emergency session. We're gonna, we're gonna still have a meeting in May.
So our May, our May meeting is May second. We still have that.
Sorry, I wasn't worried about, sorry, a May meeting was how do, if we move the March.
The March twenty-eighth meeting.
March. Do we push that into the second week of April so that if we need to make a budget amendment?
Uh, uh, I will, I'm gonna say this. I think in order to do that, you would need, we would need to then meet as a board. In order for it to be on the agenda and then vote on it, which means we're, we're making a change for no reason.
Not saving a meeting.
No.
Yeah.
Potentially.
No. I, I, I think we should keep the calendar as, uh, adopted.